Thank you. On the agenda is consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, all move approved consent agenda.
Second.
Moving seconded, further just, oh, the Honorable Senator French has just arrived. All rise.
All rise.
Stop it.
Moving seconded, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. We do have a public hearing that opens on nine twenty, so we'll hang out here for just a little bit. And open that at nine twenty. Senator French, how are you?
Good. How are you, Mr. President?
Oh, we're here. Watch your back, come on up.
Oh, man.
Decision making power is back over here.
That's true. Keep it up after eighteen minutes of seven.
Close up. Excellent agenda is public hearing, order some minor subdivision. County pilot two, Kevin Zeno, tell them that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicants for this project are Kevin and Allison French. This property is in the GRP zoning district, the planning areas include town rules. We did receive an application for this minor subdivision, and this is sketch plan review on July sixteenth of this year, including all those things you see, sketch plan which is in figure one. The applicants request approval of this five lot, a five lot subdivision. One lot will be six point two four acres, one lot will be five point eight one acres, one lot five point eight four acres, one lot seven foot ninety-six acres, and one lot five point seven four acres, all for residential use. Go location of this property, that's shown in figure two. It's just northeast of Ralston, on the north side of Highway fourteen A, and it's on the east side of County Road fourteen. I mentioned that this is in the GRP zoning district, and the lot sizes proposed are consistent with that district. Terms of neighboring land use, primarily agriculture. There are some residential, residential vacant nearby, and south of Highway fourteen eight are two special uses that have special use permits, essential gravel pit, a rock product mine, and a special event permit for Clark mules. Terms of site characteristics, this property is currently vacant, irrigated crop land, and the topography soaps gently from northwest to southeast. This property is not within any municipality, municipal view is not required. Notice of intent to subdivide, that was published in the Powell Tribune on July eighth and July fifteenth. For this public hearing, notice was in the Powell Tribune on August thirteenth and September fourteenth. Certified notice was mailed to neighboring property owners on August twenty-sixth. Staff report was shared with all of you and with the applicant and their representative prior to today. Agency referrals were made. Some, I'm going to summarize several of those, TCT, Park County School District one, fire, Park County Fire District one, and the postal service basically said they could all provide services. Rocky Mountain Power said they have the ability to provide electricity to each of these lots. Black Hills Energy also stated that they have the ability to provide service, and they have a gas line on the east side of County Road fourteen. Of course, as you know, this is a minor, so utilities have to be made adjacent to each lot. That will come later, we get to talk in this staff report about a subdivision improvements agreement being required and coming later. Park County Treasurer said taxes are paid in full. We didn't receive a response from YDOT. They said that there is an existing approach off their highway that is a field access. They said no residential accesses can be used from this access. And as you know, it's understood that the access for these lots will come off the county road. Park County weed pest, Mary didn't inspection, did not find any weeds, but because of circumstances, said a weed plan will be required. We have received that approved weed plan, Mr. Chairman. Shoshone Irrigation District, they responded, they've spoken with the applicants and reviewed the sketch plan. Of course, this will require their review and recommendations, but that does not have to occur until before final plan. Game and Fish responded, they do not have any specific concerns with this subdivision. However, they remain concerned with the number of subdivisions proposed in the county. Public Works responded, they had very specific comments, I'll try to summarize. The road going into the subdivision, you will classify as local access road. Of course, coming off of the county road will require a permit from them. They said YDOT should be consulted, that's occurred. They said plans for this new road will have to be done under the, or under the review of a wilding licensed engineer. Public Works will be notified, needs to be notified in the construction schedule. They said the applicants have proposed three different road names, I don't know if a road name has been decided upon. Public Works said a shared maintenance agreement is recommended. New road, they also said new roads will be provided installed by them, and they do require a rose, a runoff and erosion control. Mr. Chairman, after Public Works looked at this, we didn't receive a review of groundwater that was done by engineering associates. And the report recommends that domestic water for the subdivision comes in the well with aquifer. The report finds that water quality is acceptable, production is adequate, and the report recommended that wells be at depths less than two hundred feet, and the wells target sands between a hundred and two hundred feet in depth. And I believe that you had a chance to look at that report. Terms of public comments, we've not received any public comments, but we had a number of verbal public comments at P and Z. Kind of a summary of those concerns were about water, impact of new water wells, removal of productive, productive ag lands, increased traffic on the state highway, and impacts to wildlife, primarily from traffic. There was a pre-app meeting on July first, we didn't receive an application. These were paid, we did have title report. Garbage disposal service, as you know, is available from private companies. In terms of any hazardous features on the property, we know of none that exists. As I mean, I did not mention this, Mr. Chairman, but we did receive a Solz report from the Powell Clarks for Conservation District. I think under comments, we said it hadn't been received, but that has been received just recently. And I talked about the weed plan, of course, you saw the sketch plan. Wastewater requirements, a subsurface evaluation was completed, that was done on proposed lots three, four, and five. Perpetrate were fast, and so we made some comments in here. One possibility to deal with that is to place for any, any drain field, place some fonges to try to slow down that perpetrate. We don't mention it here, of course, another option would be to maybe try to find a different place for your drain field that has a better purpose. Get to groundwater, those excavation cuts were made, and down to ten feet groundwater was not discovered. Domestic water requirement, there was a water sample that was taken from a water well on thirteen oh three Highway fourteen A. I think that's just a little bit northeast of this property. No coliform was discovered, TDS was, was at just over three hundred, which is below their recommended level of not over five hundred. Nitrogen was at point eight eight, which again is below that, we recommend below being, it's below ten, which is a cutoff. Letter arsenic was not detected, chlorine and sulfate were detected, but those were at levels that essentially not contamination levels. Ag impacts, this will remove, should it be approved, this will remove the ag land from production. Applicant will, has complied with weed and pest. They, we assume they will comply with irrigation district. The applicant said they don't expect the subdivision to introduce any pest-related problems or domestic pet disturbances to livestock. We don't believe there's anything here that will negatively impact neighboring ag property, should this be approved. Water rights, I did mention that the Shoshone Irrigation District has been notified. And Mr. Chairman, we have findings, as you know, we do have conditions recommended by staff. I'll just point out condition number two, if you, you know, choose to consider a condition, number two no longer applies because there has been a Solz report that's been received. Would it happen to answer any questions you might have?
Any questions for that, Mr. President? This is a public hearing, we have any comments, is the applicant, have wish to add anything? Yes, just go ahead and state your name.
Kevin French, thank you for meeting with me, I just have a prepared response, if that's all right, if I read it? Sir. Thanks for meeting with us. We've been following the requirements outlined by the Planning and Zoning Commission for minor subdivisions, and there was a last minute decision, number nine, tacked on by the Planning and Zoning Board to submit a letter of no adverse recommendation on the adequacy of water wells prior to the sketch plan review by the Board of County Commissioners. And I'd just like to point out that this is not only untypical, but it's not one of these has been placed on a minor subdivision since before twenty eighteen or even longer, and that it's not a requirement outlined for minor subdivisions. To change the rules or requirements sets a standard, I think, of inconsistency. And I believe that the Planning and Zoning Board tacked on this requirement solely based on public outcry. Many of whom complained with the water wells have good water wells themselves. I will say that I went ahead and spent additional money to look into the matter, even though it wasn't required. And I had a groundwater review done, which was then you guys attacked it, and I had, I believe, the other chance to review that. And Lyle and Nick can speak more to that if you guys have more specific questions. But what I gathered from this report is that the wells at shallower depths and the terrace gravel wells have a range on their gallons per minute flow between three and a half, on a well that was drilled at a very shallow depth in nineteen forty-five, of fifteen feet, all the way up to twenty-six gallons per minute at forty-five foot depth, and a static water level ranging between thirteen to forty feet. And if you look at the deeper wellwood formation, which is much deeper, they range anywhere from five gallon per minute to twenty-five gallon per minute, at depths of sixty-five foot to a hundred and fifty-five foot in depth, and the static water levels from nine foot to twenty-five foot. And this formation has a much higher drawdown capacity in that area and was recharged, excuse me, and is recharged over a much broader area. And again, Lyle and Nick can speak more to that report. But I'd kind of ask that you guys remove the requirement regarding the adequacy of water wells, as it's not a requirement of minor subdivisions, and take into consideration the additional work and research that I've paid for on this groundwater review, and you should quell any issues around water availability. And it also shows that there are two layers that any prospective presidential buyer may choose from when putting a water on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin. Further comment? Sir?
Yes, Randy Bear, in regard to his wanting that section nine removed, I request that stay in place. I live within an eighth of a mile of this proposed subdivision. And there's a few disputed facts, there's a dozen homes within a quarter mile of this proposed subdivision, not the three or four that were stated earlier. And within a sixteenth of a mile, Roberts bought seven acres, that's right next, going to this place here, and tried twice to get well water unsuccessfully. And that's my concern. I bought my property because I have good well water. And if they start taking the subsurface water, that could deeply mine and devalue my property. The process that, then I'd have to go on the sister, and it's just a two-fold thing, it's not just me, it's a dozen people around me. There's people already in this area that are getting sand in their well water, and they're starting to lose their water within eighth of a mile of this proposed subdivision. My proposal is that he can have subdivision anytime at once, as long as northwest or somewhere else comes in there with adequate water. And I'm sure the Roberts went to him, there wasn't any water there when they bought that property. And I believe that should be an honest disclosure from anyone trying to sell property that, you know, there's been two wells dug here, no water. I don't know anything about the well water, or wellwood water. My static water is, like you said, twenty feet down. It's good water, you know, I could bottle it and sell it, probably. But that's my objection to this, is that some divisions are going to happen, but not just there, the county needs to start looking for alternatives, because the face of this one grow, and they, and it's going to be a continuous problem. And we do enough in the desert, once the water's gone, it's gone. You know? And our water precipitation per year is less than Phoenix, Arizona, you know? So it's a serious issue. So I propose that, you know, he can do what he wants when it comes to some of those. Maybe he should have full disclosure, and I'm injecting to any well water, wells being drilled for domestic use, because there's already a dozen people that could stay there, and buying more is just going to make it even worse.
Further public comment? Yes, Mike Bear.
Yes, to start out with, I have no financial interest in this, just so you know.
We do need you to state your name for the record, sir.
Kevin French. Former county commissioner, former person that's set up there. I'm here in support of this one, and any other simple or minor subdivision or whatever, that's followed the regs. I mean, our two thousand fifteen regs state, along with, I'll read it real quick. This resolution for the standards and regulations shall be known as the two thousand fifteen Park County Development Standards and Rules. Resolution, as a result of these findings, the board for the county commission does hereby resolve to adopt these park county development standards and regulations pursuant to the authority vested by the state of Wyoming and Park County, Wyoming Statute eighteen five two oh one, Wyoming Statute thirty-four twelve one oh one, twenty-four dash one one oh four, sixteen three one oh one. This is a contract, this is the contract that the county commissioners has made with the people of Park County. It states, if you do A, B, C, and D, then you will be approved. We will review it, and if there's a glaring issue, you know, we'll, we'll talk to you about it. So this, this is what guides us. It's a, it's a contract so we can look at it and say, okay, this is, there's some development here or there. And as far as wells, the state engineers office is in control of water wells. Then if there's water deeper, sounds like they're in a shallower formation, there's no reason to kill the subdivision if you can get water further down. The north end of Powell, that's systems for thirty, forty years out there, because it had bad water, the north end. You know, and I know the big elephant in the room is putting subdivisions on farmland. And I get that more than anybody gets that. Having grown up on a homestead, been a farmer for fifty years nearly, and sitting where you guys have sat for eighteen years. You know, the entire county of Park, around fifty miles up to South Fork to Frank, hundred miles across is one giant subdivision on ag land, prime farmland. My parents homesteaded on the Heart Mountain Irrigation District, every one of them put a, a house on prime ag land. The town of Powell, that, when I said where you guys said, we funded PEP or RECTO, the Matiti Economic Act, or whatever their name was, to promote the area. And what does that promotion do? Brings businesses in, brings people in. The town of Powell, my hometown, is a prime example. There's seven thousand people live on the very best prime farmland in Park County. The college, the hospital, the nursing home, sheriff's office, fire hall, seven thousand people live on prime farmland. And it's never been an issue. North of Powell, north of Dent Street, east of the college, fifty acre field going into houses. Best farmland in the valley. So we've been chopping it up, and it hasn't offended me or many others that live here. Four out of five of you live out in the country. Why? You live on ag land because you want some room, you want to raise some horses, whatever. Mr. Mandel lives in Powell, last I knew, on a, in a house that, when it was originally built, was built on prime farmland. So, you know, we're not destroying Park County by allowing land to be subdivided. That's a major private property right, our, I think it's twenty years old land use plan, says right in there. We, we, I'll read it, real quick, feel humor me here. It states, well, that we honor private property rights. Writing in our own documents, all of our documents say, all right, if you want to do something, you have to follow this process. And if you follow that process, you'll be granted that with a, to make, or minor tweaks. That's what has happened with Cornerstone, than any others that are coming for you. They followed the process, they spent tens of thousands of dollars, getting up to a point where the county said, if you give this, we're good with it. That's all I have to say. Hopefully you'll approve it.
Further public comment? Yes, sir?
Randy Bear.
Well, actually, I'm going to go to the gentleman behind you, you've already had.
I'm Pat Graham, and from Powell, I live just half a mile from the new subdivision. And I think that the county's old plan is, need to be updated. And I think all subdivisions need to have water studies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bear, real quick, if you would.
Yes, you know, I don't dispute that Powell, the city itself is on prime farmland. That's going to happen everywhere in the United States, whether it's in the basin or not. We're disputing water, ever since this basin was homesteaded, people have been living on systems because they cannot get drinkable water or no water at all. So as long as subdivisions or commercial property wants to be developed, that is great, as long as there's water without taking it from the depleted groundwater source that we already have.
Further public comment? Hearing any kind of motion?
So move to close public hearing.
And moving seconded, all of the favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Kevin, one question here, I'm still, I've done so many of these, you think we haven't figured out. If we approve or deny, whatever, we base our record on what we're provided by P and C here, and when we consider condition, we are considering staff conditions, correct?
Yep.
Not commission conditions. The concern, Mr. French, young French in the back, is a commission condition, it is not a staff. So therefore, if it is approved, your condition that you're worried about does not exist. Understand where I'm at?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was thinking the right, to say to this one.
Is there anyone going to make a motion here?
Here's what I would like to say, in quick response for my motion, because I'm afraid, in response to Senator French, this is very difficult for me, the farmland thing is a big issue, water is too, especially how it affects our neighbors. However, he has a very good point, I mean, we're on minor and, and simple subdivisions, a lot of people that are. That's what I would want to do. And the farmland thing is a, is a big pet people line, and I'm, I don't agree a hundred percent with Senator French. However, there are responsible types of development. And I do actually believe that this is right on the borderline, and I would, I would support it simply because of its proximity with fourteen A, even though Ralston is not a true municipality, it's within a quarter mile of Ralston. You know, Powell can run across it, all the way down the road, you know, you know, it gets, it's more in reference to others that are clear out in the islands of development in our country, so. With that, I would approve the. Am I working correctly, and my numbers are correct? Sketch time review of the, of the minor subdivisions.
Moving seconded, further discussion? Yeah, I'm a criminalizer, I do have a little bit. Again, we have a public hearing cracking at nine forty-five, we have another public hearing at nine forty-five, okay? I mean, this is important, and water has become a big issue, and we're all aware of that, and will continue to become a bigger issue. And I agree with Senator French that the state engineer's office, and we think a lot of them have currency over water. There's no question about that. And the big problem I have, that I, I don't think people are really focusing on, is really the only reason that we have the amount of water we have, especially in the farming districts, is because of flood irrigation and all of the irrigation canals we have. And as more and more land is sprinkled, and more lateral ventures are buried, there's going to be less groundwater, you know? But I'm not sure, we, we don't have control over that. Okay. And moving seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Randy Greg, I'm sorry, we're going to bump you guys down to when you come in for the contract. Because we have a public hearing opening right now. It's actually not a public hearing, it's a continuance of a public hearing for the Adeline Estates. All that room, I think we're going to lose about half of them. Thank you, sir. Good seeing you, Tim. Yeah, you got it, Jim.
Yes.
Okay. We had the Adeline Estates public hearing a couple meetings ago. There was quite a bit of public comments, and we ran out of time, so we continued it. Does staff have anything to add at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have some emails that just came in.
They forward this to, to us electronically, or are you just hard copy?
They're, they're hard copies because of five oh B, they just came in, so. So this is one condition, either ours. Okay, just who they came in, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Justin Joy just sent this into Jolene at nine eighteen and nine twenty-four this morning.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, while you're reading those, I just want to reiterate a couple things I didn't get a chance to say last time. So you'll remember at our last public hearing, we gave you, there was a new sketch plan that came in a few days after our staff report consent. So we shared that new sketch plan with you. I just want to comment that all the lot sizes and configurations in that sketch plan are consistent with the regulations, and those lot sizes are consistent with the regulations in regard to lot size averaging, because that is what this applicant requests or has, has, has done.
So over to the continuance of the hearing, we have further public comment on this proposed substation. Yes, sir.
My name is John Streeter. I live at one sixty-five Road twenty, immediately to the north of this subdivision. I'm concerned about it for all the usual reasons. Groundwater, and the, and the, the new septic systems that'll be going in. These lots are all going to be right against my south property line. But what I'm really concerned about are my neighbors who farm. They are potentially going to lose sixty acres this year to subdivision. What will it be next year? I talked to the county, I talked to the Cody Conservation District this morning. Since January one, in Park County, two hundred and fifty-five acres of ag land have been taken out of production. In Powell, it's over seven hundred. That's bumping up against a thousand acres since January one this year. How long can we do this? I think we all know and realize that oil and gas is a dying industry in our area. So what do we have left? Agriculture and tourism. And last year, tourism took a big hit. So we know it's not insulated from downturns. What, how long can we sustain our county if we continue to shrink our ag land like this every year? It's just, it's really, to me, is alarming. I have grandkids growing up in Park County right now, and without any kind of opportunity in the future, will they stay here? No, they won't. I've grown, I was born and raised in Park County. I've lived sixty-eight of my seventy-three years in Park County. I know for a fact it's one of the best places on the planet to live and to raise a family, but we're losing that. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Pat Nelson. I, I live at Oregon Nelson Land, which is about a quarter of a mile from this subdivision. And while I respect these guys' rise to subdivision, my problem is the lot sizing. And, and like John said, farm ground is a consideration. If they would do five acre lots, like it's, it's zone four, at least they could do a small amount of farming on five acres. One point six eight acre lots are not going to see any farming whatsoever. Maybe a door. So, so my, my deal is the lot size thing. I would rather see him subdivide the whole thing in seven, five acre lots now and, and just move on, rather than do these small, small lots where that farm ground will be lost forever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comments?
Yes, Marge, I call time at one six, Road twenty. And I would say two, and you've heard me say that before. I have not only concerns for Mr. Streeter and Pat Nelson, but I also am very skeptical about going to be a bitch, so land use rules. Maybe we subdivide today, we only have, you know, a few one acre, three acre, twenty-eight acre, whatever. But down the roadside here, are we going to have a hundred thirty houses on twenty-eight acre, divided by one acre, half acre plus? And that is a real concern to me, not only with water, traffic, and the size of our county's farming, you are losing farm ground. It changes it, sets a precedent for the future to say, well, we have a development here. I heard that in the discussion earlier. Oh, we have a commercial development, we have subdivision down here, so we have another subdivision. Is that a precedent for the future use of more subdivisions?
Well, it's definitely, it's definitely a, a hot button issue right now. And trying to get our, you know, there's, we are, and we say this every time, we're getting ready to put an RFP out for, for new land use plan. It's not like you can stop stuff right now and say, wait until this new land use plan gets, gets, uh, in, in place. But those, all of those issues are going to be addressed, and we're going to ask the community, and that's what we're going to ask is everyone in this, in this room, when that land use plan starts getting redeveloped or developed, is step up to the plate, come share your concerns, get on the committees. But it's definitely a, let's say it's definitely a hot button issue right now. This all comes.
Okay, I.
Go ahead and say your name.
Sandra Buckholz. And directly across from the subdivision, I was conceived in that house, born in the Cody Hospital and lived out there. And I rode the bus for ten years. And because I had such downtime on the bus, and it was an opportunity, I read Gone with the Wind three times. And the word I want to take out of that book is carpetbaggers. And I agree with Pat that we need to go by the law, which is five acre lots, right now. It says the law on the books in black and white. And we need to do exactly what she said. Because it's the county, which is the country. And if you guys allow this to go through, I'm letting you know that each one of you are city commissioners, not county. Because you're turning this beautiful area into a mini-city. And the people that will buy all that land and live out there do not have the same values as the predecessors that have been there for a long time. And it's going to change, and across this, you know, the county, it's going to change, whatever you want to call it, the energy of our area, which attracts all the people here. And I'm telling you, it's the wrong decision, and you're going against the law that you have on the books, which is five acres. I know about the averaging, but let's go down to breast cats. And, and, okay, and then you're setting a precedent, because I have another area near my home that I've been at for twenty-five years. And I'm a farmer, I watered with wheel wagons. You know, I used to, that one year I, I, I watered, you remember when it looked so good over at, uh, by you, that ranch, I can't remember. I watered that, you know? I picked rock. My mom and dad homesteaded in nineteen forty-eight. I know the value of the land differently than city dwellers that come out and, and they look across there, and it's just like a golf course to them. Because that's their mentality. And then, then you, you have to have a water master to give them all water. Okay, whereas, do you have a water study? Who's the water master? When, right now, who, who's stepping up to the plate to be the water master to give all those? So how many we got? Four, four of these, one acre?
Six.
Six, okay, we got six. Who's the water master? Tell me who it is. Is it the developer? Is he going to go out there and?
Paul Brock.
Paul Brock is.
Let's keep the discussion.
Okay, Paul Brock. Okay, but I'm just telling you, it is, it's not good. It's not good for Cody. It's not good for our Western way of life. It's not good. And I just implore you and beg you not to. I mean, you know, the Civil War, it's still going on in our country right now. We don't want one, but we've got this big division. And I'm just saying, I don't want carpetbaggers in my backyard. Well, and not according to out there, that would be my front yard. Because I'm still emotionally, mentally, you know, what are connected, because I grew up on that land across from there. You know, conceived in that house. So I'm just telling you that I say no. And I don't like carpetbaggers. The South, Gone with the Wind. And I think you better really think about what you're doing.
We do. And what, what is, what can be done is, is in the law. What can be done is in, in the law.
Because of the average.
Yes, ma'am.
So the rest of that acreage, we went thirty-six acres, will be one acre lots too, also, because you're setting a precedent.
It's, you can do lot size averaging. We won't get into, but what, what you're saying we're doing is against the law, is, is for the record. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was raised on cotton.
And I mean, just, sorry, go ahead and say anything.
You want me to address you, Chairman?
Yes, sir. I know, I know you know me way too well.
I know you too. I was raised on Cottonwood Creek.
I do need you to go ahead and just say your name to report the comments.
Charlie Smith.
Yeah.
Kind of like Jones. Cottonwood Creek, my dad worked for Paul Stock. I know what it's like to live with a system. Because that's all they had, then, they, they couldn't get water out there. And, and then I had, had a place on Annie Martin Hill. And before Hone Oil put in a pivot, Dexter Shot, he had a spring down there, and it ran two and a half inch pipe in the winter, in March. This is when you got your water, that's, isn't it? When they did that, when they took that, put that pivot on there, it dropped it to an inch of water pipe coming out there. And that, you go down to Blue Shell, nobody can tell how it is until you start drilling. But it can be like this or like this. And I put quite a few wells in there to find water after they did that. And I didn't have a lot of water. And I actually divided that because it was four, it's two short forties. It was forty-eight acres, and there was twenty-four apiece, so I made twelve, four twelves out of it. But we managed to get the water by putting in reservoirs or whatever. I mean, that is a possibility. But I'm concerned about the sewer, and I'm concerned about draining what wells there are, because they put a lot of water on that piece of ground there. And you're bound to have, you're bound to have underground water. Best time to test that's in March, to see what you really got. And because they're going to go to sprinkler, they've got to go to sprinkler. And they can't water their lawns or anything out of that, so they're, because of the ditch, you know? They've ordered me quite a bit of the properties, similar to Sean and I, at about the same, most of the property ordered there. So just concerned about that. And I think you ought to just go with your GR five. I'm against breaking up good farm ground, let's put it right there. But if you're going to do it, I think you better make them have five, five acres and go on. It's not, you're not going to make anything on one and a half, two acre lots. It's just going to make a city there, and we don't need one here. Yeah, if they have real water there, that'd be a good story, but they, they don't.
Further, well, let me get to anyone else who wants. Any further public comment? Mr. Joy?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say, I'm Justin Joy. I'm the developer of the subdivision. I'd like to speak before I lose my chance, like I did last time. I have, I have history here in Powell-Cody area too. I've lived here since eighty-seven. I've been in the construction business since early two thousand, and that's how I make my living. Someone said earlier that all we have is tourism and farm ground, and that's not true. A lot of us work construction. I've asked my flying crew here to show up. Every one of them works for me full-time. They put in overtime, all the time, pretty much every week. They have families to support, and they spend their money in the community. I would argue that one of our biggest industries around here is construction. I know for a fact that, um, that ProBuild, they do over one and a half million dollars in sales a year. I would assume that Blodorn, similar, several of my subcontractors spend at least a million dollars in gross income. That's what they get a year, each one of them, a million dollars. There's, like it or not, there's a ton of money that's being spent in this community with construction. You know, hundreds of families that are supported by it. This is not just a farming community. Now, that being said, I respect farmers, and I always have. I lived in Powell for years and years. I actually didn't even want to move because, because there was too many people. The tourism, driving downtown, I didn't like that. But I made the decision to move over here and start building homes because they're worth more than they are in town. So it was just a business decision. But I love the rural communities that we have around here. Now, this lot size averaging that I'm doing is, it's set up so that I can maintain that twenty-eight acre lot and keep that farm ground. You can see it in the drawing, it's, it's very obvious that's what I'm trying to do. Right now, I got Adam George, he's leasing the property from me, both pieces. He put twenty-eight acres of corn on that, and it's already been harvested, it was a beautiful crop. He's going to harvest his third cutting of alfalfa on the lower field. And then I'll be forced to go to sprinkler on the lower field. So talking to George, Adam, he said that he wouldn't really be interested in leasing that ground anymore, because it's too small. It doesn't work, that lower section just doesn't work to farm. It's too much work for him. And I, as I drive around in all of our communities, I've probably been in almost every subdivision around here, aside from the brand new ones. But most of them that have five acre lots in them, which everybody seems to want me to do, people don't farm them. There's very few people that farm them. It is not easy to get them there with a tractor and do anything. You got utilities around, stuff like that, it's just, it doesn't work. Most people that are moving here, they want an acre and a half, two acres, that's what they prefer. I spend a lot of time talking to reliters and looking at the market and seeing what's for sale. I mean, just, I didn't design this subdivision by accident. I've lived long and hard for it. I spent hours and hours at night, weekends, looking for a piece of ground that would be a reasonable choice to subdivide. I've looked up North Fork, I've looked up South Fork, I've looked everywhere. In fact, I had a, one piece of property that was under contract that was bought up from under me. A bunch of other builders got together and bought it themselves. And that's what builders have to do right now. I can't get lots to build houses on, and I'm. And that's what builders have to do right now. I can't get lots to build houses on and my bread and butter is spec homes. I build them nice, people come in, they buy them. I just sold my last house on Wednesday. For almost a million dollars. And that fed a lot of people in this community. But I have nowhere else to build. So you wanna tell me that my family and what this little girl's future has, isn't worth it? BS.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dick Spence. I guess my accent will give it away. I'm, uh. I don't know if I qualify as a carpetbagger. I'm from the South, spent all of my career southeast. But anyway. And I was gonna talk briefly about Justin's capabilities and. His skills and what he does and the way he designs, but about sitting here, I've heard. I think I've heard that what he's proposing is within the law. We came to Wyoming and stayed. We weren't going to, we stayed because. We like Wyoming, we like the people, we like the environment. But one thing we liked above all was that Wyoming is like America used to be fifty years ago. There's still an entrepreneurial spirit, there's still rule of law, there's still love of the Lord and love of the flag. You go to the Fourth of July parade, so we thought, you know, this is where we wanna be. My children are gone. Both naval officers, but, so I'm not raising a family. But it would be a great place to do that. But in the Southeast, which is a fairly conservative region, I have seen over time encroachment. Of rights of people. Have been involved in some that were started within the law, as I understand this one is. And then the law was arbitrarily and capriciously changed with cost people money. Mr. Chairman, I heard you say, let's talk about redoing the land use, fixing it. But if people don't want this to happen, then they should change the law. We have, that's the way this country works. We go by the law. You don't like the law, you get together, you change the law. You can't change it, as you said, Mr. Chairman, right in the middle of what's going on. It's not fair to people that have taken risks and invested money.
Thanks, sir. Um, I'm gonna start. Mr. Trader, you go, then we'll do Mr. Smith and then Ms. Allsack.
Alright, I, uh. I, I wanna first address the idea that this twenty-eight acres is going to continue to be farmed. And the people who are farming it now have no interest in farming it. If there's a subdivision at the lower end of it. They'll have to drive through that subdivision with their equipment, with their trucks. They have no avenue for their wastewater. And that will become a weed patch up there. That's the first thing. I think, you know, you're allowed to swing your fist around all you want as long as it doesn't come in contact with my nose. And I think a property owner ought to be able to do as he pleases with his land. Until it has a negative effect on someone else. When it has a negative effect on other people, then I think just good human ethics. Should make you reevaluate that decision. Thank you.
I'm not trying to put a feather in my hat, okay? But I had a crew, I was in the construction business, business from way back in, uh, I was nineteen. And, uh, I started my own business when I was twenty-four. I had, uh, six full-time employees for forty years. And there's ways that you can go and, and they never, we never, we were busy. And, uh, the way with this subdivision, if you take his money and buy lots, that, and far as he says that he's not. My son's in the building business. He's general contractor here in Cody. He's busy. He just buys lots and builds them. When one comes up he wants, he goes and buys. I mean, you don't have to go through all the headache of trying to be somebody. You can be somebody and just build the houses like he said he did. If you want to build, build a, a good house like that. Buy the lot. You're not gonna build foot million dollar houses out there, not on acre and a half or two acres. I'm still set in five acre lots, if you're gonna break up farm ground and leave it at that. I, I'm not into this two acre lots. It puts too many people, too many dogs and everything. Gonna have a city, let's do it on Cooper Lane or someplace.
Okay, like, I, I don't understand. I just have a question. If you buy a place with a five acre lot, can you subdivide it into? Can you? Into smaller, smaller.
Depends on where it is.
Yeah, it depends on which subdivision you're in. So the one that he's in, I believe is GR five.
Yes.
And, uh, so no lots, the average of the lots that can come out of that land is five acres. Which means he can have some smaller ones, but then the others have to remain very large. So he can, there's no. There cannot be more lots than with average five acres for the total of those lots, if that makes sense.
So, so what is he actually doing? How many lots?
He's doing five lots. Four of them are under two acres. Okay, so we've got three, you know.
One lot is three acres, three are one point six eight acres, and then one lot is just over twenty-eight acres.
So the, the, the goal.
Let's go ahead and, yeah.
Yeah, the goal of lot size averaging is to leave larger spaces available for ag or open space. And to concentrate the housing otherwise. So that, that's the goal of it.
Okay, so the twenty-eight acres, okay, once this is approved, then when he wants to subdivide the twenty-eight acres. He has to come before you again and it's a brand new subdivision.
There would be a major subdivision at that point, and it would also have to meet the average lot size. For the whole piece of property as it is now, not the twenty-eight acres. Cause that twenty-eight acres can never be looked at alone now. It has to include looking at the other parcels as well.
Just to follow on that, though. The twenty-eight, where there cannot be any further split of any of these lots without it going completely through the subdivision process.
Yes, go through something.
My name is Maria Joy. I am Justin's wife. And I would like to let all of you know that I once took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And the law. And we are very much within the law. Is that correct? The subdivision is within the law. Did all of you take an oath of office when you were elected? You did. I am holding you to that oath. As I was held to my oath. When I took an oath as a peace officer, I am a retired peace officer. I was in law enforcement ten years, five of that was on the Wind River Indianas region. And I fought like heck to never violate anybody's rights. And as I'm sitting in this room today, I feel like that's exactly what's happening, because you guys are encroaching on our rights. We paid cash for this property. It is ours. We are within that law, but you guys took an oath to uphold. And it sounds to me like in this room, people are trying to change that law, as Mr. Spence has explained that. And I would expect you guys, please. Honor those rights. Now, we, the law hasn't changed and it's not gonna change in this room. If you wanted to change, change it in the future. But I'm asking you to uphold your oath that you took and abide by that, cause I did. There is not anything that we are doing that's against the law. I understand your concerns. I understand them a hundred percent, but I hear a lot of hypocrisy in this room. He wants to keep it as farm ground, but she worried about the water. Well, if you're a farmer, you're gonna be using water, right? So is that gonna be taking away from water from your property if it still stays farm ground? How much of that water is gonna be taking away from you as it would if we had a subdivision? What's the difference? You're still taking water away from one point or the other, right? But you wanted to stay farm ground. You still use the water. So, to me, I, I hear a lot of hypocrisy in here. And we, we planned this subdivision accordingly to keeping it farm ground. We didn't just take away all the land that's there. We're not putting houses on every acre in there. There's gonna be two separate roads into this subdivision. So it's not like every single person that drives into the subdivision will be driving past your house. But people need a place to live and we're running out of room in this city. I'm not a city dweller. I'm a country girl. I love the country, but we also have a livelihood just like everybody else in here. So for you to come in here and tell me what I can and can't do with my property really frustrates me. I don't come to your property and ask you what you're doing there, asking you to get all these tests from your water wells. I'm not telling you that you need permission for me to do it or you want on the property, so don't do it to me.
So, Mr. Buckle?
No, I have a question about planning and going. Um, as it stands right now, exactly can it be seven lots? Is that it in any size or you're doing the size averaging? It is scheduled right now for five acres. And you're changing it to be three one acre, one point six acre, one two acre and one three acre?
That is not correct.
Alright, what?
So, so it is in a GR five, which typically has a minimum lot size of five acres or average of, of five acres. And because we have rules for lot size averaging, you are allowed to have an average of parcels that come out to five acres. So they can have up to seven lots on this property, so long as the average is five acres. Which means some can be smaller than five, some will be larger than five. They cannot go below one acre. That is the absolute minimum for lot size averaging in GR five.
Okay, and so in the future, let's say two years from now. Um, if you wanted to build more houses, you would have to come before us.
Absolutely. True. Unless the rule changes between that and then.
Right, but I understand that. Um, but we have to, another, let's say if you wanted to do half, it would be. Uh, the front part, I think, Brian's on half of that, the one of five acres subdivided, yes? Um, and another one's the land. You can subdivide it, seven lots again or how would that?
No, this parcel that is being subdivided will remain a tract of record. And it can only be split into seven lots total, and they each have to be more than one acre. So that would mean some of them could be one acre, which would mean others would have to be larger to meet that average. But it cannot be split under today's rule into more than seven total lots, which means we have five right now. If he came back tomorrow, uh, let's say this got approved and it got planted and they wanted to come back and do more lots. They would have to go through the major subdivision process. Because we will have to reach more than five lots under thirty-five acres each. And it would have to go through public review all over again to ensure that it meets the rule.
Uh, you know, what's the difference between a major subdivision?
A major subdivision is a tract of record that has been split into more than five lots, each of which is under thirty-five acres. So right now, he has reached five lots, each under thirty-five acres. If he were to split any one of them, that would have given us six lots, each of which would be under thirty-five acres. You're welcome.
And Mr. Chairman, you know this, but the one point six eight acre lots, should this be approved, they will not be, should someone want to, they could not be. Be subdivided in the future.
Mr. Joy. Um, I just wanted to address some of the, the water and farming, uh, stuff. We, on the north side of the property, we left a sixty-foot access easement there, um, so that we can get equipment and stuff in there. Uh, that easement is only allowed to be used by lot one and two. Um, we have a variance with Hart Mountain irrigation right now. That is still allowing us to do flood irrigation on the larger parcel, and I'm still trying to get that approved again. Um, since we didn't break it up and I would hope that they allow us to do that, you know. That way we can continue to flood irrigate and people can be confident in their well water and everything else, but. That, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I guess that's all.
But you have general back here, but.
Yeah, I'm Pete DePillo. I'm, uh, the surveyor doing the subdivision. I'm representing Justin Joy, and I just wanna kind of bring up some, uh, some detail. That's been spoken about with the different subdivisions, these, uh, lot size averaging. And, you know, Mr. Joy can put seven five acre lots on this thirty-six, some change in the parcel. And that would be very detrimental, very detrimental to the groundwater in this area. Um, the way Hart Mountain irrigation has it set that anything five acres or less, you have to sprinkly irrigate. Well, there goes your flood irrigation. Um, so that would actually negatively impact. The way it sits right now from when Mr. Joy purchased this property. Where these smaller lots are actually being placed will never be flooded irrigated again per Hart Mountain Irrigation District's regulations. Never. Only lot one, the twenty-eight acre piece is allowed to be flooded with a variance request that is in the process right now. So what I'm getting at is it, Mr. Joy is, I, you know, I've worked with a lot of developers. Mr. Joy is very, uh, advantageous and, and, and very neighbor aware. That he doesn't wanna take the flooded ground away, uh, you know, and, and that could very easily, twenty-eight acres can easily be a cash crop. I mean, I'm getting ready to harvest sugarbees off of a fifteen and a half acre field, so. Twenty-eight acres of the sixty-foot rideaway is plenty sufficient for farm equipment and everything else. Um, so, uh. I think that's all I've got for, for right now. But I did just wanna mention that if he did stick with the five acre minimums, that, that it would probably directly affect the groundwater. Versus what he's got now will probably more or less, they had no effect.
So just, everybody, we're reviewing. I wanna make sure everyone has their chance to make public comment, but. Without, I really don't think we'll wanna continue this again, so we're running a little bit shy on time. So if you're gonna say something you've already said, we'd prefer you hold it back. If you've got something new to share, we'd be more than willing to hear your comments. Yes, but I can, Ms. Allsack.
I just propose that the twenty-eight acres will be subdivided in the future because that is his life.
Ma'am, that's not what we're discussing right now. We're discussing what's in front of us in the subdivision that has been proposed to us right now. That's what we're discussing right now. Okay, Mrs. Trader?
I think you can stand in the middle of this subdivision and turn in any direction and see unfarmable ground where houses could be built.
Miss Jess.
I just have one comment about your oath of office. I believe you are supposed to do what's right for the county. Uh, as well as everything else you're sworn to. And I'd just like to say that farm ground is disappearing at forty acres every hour, twenty-four seven. What are you gonna do when it's done? That's it.
Okay, further public comment. Moving second to close public hearing, further discussion. Oh, those in favor, I, I oppose most carries.
Yes, sir. I have a good, just a couple, couple comments here. You know, I think the greatest issue before us right now with the majority of comments about it. And lot size averaging. And it is part of our development standards. And I believe it's our obligation to follow through on our development standards. And the second point I'd like to make is, you know, if you really stop and think about it. A lot of people are moving to Park County, whether we like it or not, they're coming. And people have nothing about living in the country and in rural areas. And for surely know nothing about irrigating. So if you have someone that's forced to buy a five acre lot or a ten acre lot, they're gonna have a yard and the rest of it's gonna go to weeds. But by smaller lots, I believe Mr. Joy was correct when he said that's what people are looking for, is rural, tight lifestyle with smaller lots. Two acre lot is nothing more than a big yard and that they're gonna take care of.
Mr. Mango.
I just wish that the commissioners, where I got a hundred, down the land use. You know, it, it has a point of, is, is our planning and zoning and the town commissioners in charge of preserving the family farm? Or, or is our job to restrict the farmer from selling, uh, or? Or, or is our job to restrict the farmer from selling or even making a buck? He's, uh, at the start of being land rich, money poor, uh, you know, when there's a landlord who's right. We have put out the rules, it depends, and, and people have had to go through our planning and zoning process, which I've heard is very simple, maybe not. It does take a while. There's some shakeover ahead there. Until we get this land use plan, I think these people are following, following the rules that we did set up. Uh, Commissioner French had said before, you know, the resolution that was put back in two thousand fifteen, we were in a contract with the county. And so I, you know, as far as us being the ones in charge of stopping or saving the family farm, I think there's other ways to save the family farm. And I've seen farm on the way here to, to this meeting that are still for sale. Just off Land Ten, a big farm, just off fourteen acre, big farm, it's for sale. How do we save those farms? And how do we keep them from being turned into, into just the regular plots and homes? So, um, I'm, I, I think that this plan has danced through the regulations and they have, uh, put up with our planning and so, not say put up, but they've gone through what planning and zoning wanted them to do. So I don't see a, a problem with, with approving this plan.
Mr. Teal.
The land use plan has been brought up. Forty-one years ago, we did this land. And I was, I was on, another question. We're not a hard sector with a special mineral lot size potential. Um, I would open my question, our question to staff is, looking at figure three of what I have front of me, considering block group bonus, does that have any effect to lot size averaging? It has a percentage next to it. Then what in reference? Okay, so that's a reference to something else, another exemption. So, but where I'm going with this is, twenty-one years ago, we asked, we said GR5. We, we don't want lots smaller than GR5, but we put on in an exception. So yes, they're following the rules, but what was the intent of this special lot size averaging? Why was it in place? Was it to preserve right up in space? Was it to preserve a landmark, uh, unbuildable ground? I don't know. And I, I, it's a question to you guys. I'm on the fence here.
What if, any of this, you know, we're trying, trying to figure out what people think of twenty-one years ago is kind of tough. But they did agree that if you lot size average, you could do it. They said, yes, we can, if, if you want lot size average, you can do it.
As a special program.
And.
And I'm, that's where I'm at. What is this special program?
Joy, do you wanna try and address that?
So I just wanna open by saying it's not my fault. In fact, it's not my staff's fault. Uh, we were, we are simply tasked with carrying through these rules. And we're getting a lot of heat for it, so I just wanna put that on the record. Do we agree with all these rules? No, but we are here to abide by them. Can I speak to the intent? Um, maybe. Um, you know, I wasn't present for those hearings that occurred many times over on these rules. These rules were written in two thousand, but they've been amended many times since. And these, these rules have stayed that entire time. I believe the intent of lot size averaging was to allow for people to preserve large tracts as part of their subdivision. So it would still enable people to have smaller lot sizes while also preserving a big piece for potentially farming or open space. That is my belief on what the intent was. I do think it is a bit detrimental in that we allow them to go down to one acre lot sizes and that as soon as you start getting down to one acre, you start having problems with meeting your, um, septic offsets for wells. So where you have a subdivision that has one acre lots and you're proposing wells and septic systems, you could run into a problem of not meeting those offsets. You know, builder A comes in and he's fine, builder B comes in and he's fine, but then builder C in the middle comes in and he may not be able to build, or he may have to do something else because he can't meet those offsets. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, one acre to me seems rather small in a GR5, but I can't, I can't speak to the intent of it.
Mr. Magel, that's where I'm at, is the fact that we didn't move through a land use plan a couple of times ago without an end. And this is in GR5, so why, you know, if in respect to the people that put the land use plan together before and the homeowners that are surrounding, they believe that they live in an area that won't have a bunch of condensed housing. I'm not saying they have it right, and it makes perfect sense. I'm just trying to follow where the special circumstance break is below what the GR5 is.
Mr. Chairman, may I make something? And again, I, my joy, I wasn't here. I don't know what, what the intent was with lot size averaging, but I do know our rates talk about conventional subdivisions. And in GR5, a conventional subdivision were lots of five acres or greater, but then it also talks about lot size averaging. So I guess to speak to Commissioner Teal, I don't know if it was meant for any special conditions, but our rates is talking about conventional subdivisions and lot size averaging subdivisions.
And a couple of the group law and subdivision.
Exactly, yes, okay, and extensions.
Um, this has been extremely difficult. I don't like very much about the subdivision of those small lots. Um, we're right now below it on, uh, late twenty, um, so well aware of what's happened out there in the last forty years. My question, more came into, yes, this did follow the latter of the rules. My question is the two access roads and amount of space and what that takes away from even those one point four acre, one point six acre lots. We have a sixty-foot easement on the north part of the lot and a twenty-foot easement on the south part of the lots, on lots four and five, which makes the usable part of lot five about one point nine, one point zero nine, which seems pretty tight, but within the letter of what can happen. My issue is two dirt roads, so both sides of those lots have to stay dirt, which is dust and traffic and all that. Why not just build the one road on the sixty-foot, which would be normal in what I've seen in flats in the last twenty or thirty years I've dealt with them with the water district and here? I just think that's a, yes, is it legal? Yes, it does hit the rules. Is it unusual and kind of a, in my view, a poor situation for the people that may live on those lots because they have their roads on both sides of their lot? Just a concern that I have, I just don't like it.
Mr. Chairman, an effort to move the thing forward, all of we approve. Hold on a second, that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion. Commissioner Teal.
Would, uh, would, I, would, do, what do you think of Dossky's idea? I mean, can we allow an addition to put sixty-foot easement that land at the box? I mean, it makes, it makes perfect sense.
I don't know if it's our position, our place to, or, or place to tell the developer how we're putting through this.
Well, we're, we're approving this sketch design. I mean, that's on there. At forty foot, we're just requesting a sixty foot as a condition.
A sixty foot?
Instead of sixty, yeah.
Instead of the sixty and a twenty.
It's, it's currently a forty inch truck.
Well, we've got a sixty.
Sixty on the north. Is I correct?
Sixty on the north, twenty.
Sixty. Lead to sixty. Mr. Joy, do you wanna address that real quick? Yes, I would. Um, so lot, uh, three, three and four will be using the access on the south side. Uh, there's, I mean, it's essentially a driveway. It's not very long. Um, it's not like there Nelson Lane that goes for miles. I mean, it's, there, it's, it's short. There's a lot of lots. Let's say I did a five acre lot in there, uh, the driveways would be that long anyway, uh, especially if you set your house back away. So it's not an unreasonable length, um, in my opinion. As far as like the size of the lots, I've, I spend a lot of time working in trailhead subdivision and most of those lots are between six and twelve thousand square feet. Um, I'm quite proficient at fitting houses, septic systems, wells and stuff on those side lots. That won't be a concern whatsoever.
Alright.
So just to be clear, this is the current, because what I have says forty.
We updated when we were handed in the last.
Yes, and I'm, I'm bringing that sentiment because it will address one of the concerns of the possible continuing farming on lot one and the easement going through being their own approved for tractors, trucks and tillage equipment to get to lot one.
Well, that's where the sixty-foot easement comes in, right?
Correct, and it's not in my plan.
I got you. Okay. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Move to hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. No, I'm gonna get to it right now. Thank you.
Ram it, ram, ram through it. But, but we're gonna, we're gonna just, are you gonna take? I wanna, what's that? Well, then we'll take it to a minute, a couple minute break and then we'll come back and do that C back. I mean, we'll do the, uh, your desk, and then we'll go into, uh, the, uh, in our, our, the open landfill bids and et cetera, and then we'll do the. Alright, that's actually, we got a couple minute break, man, we need it. No, you gotta take breaks.
Just for the record, I was disconnected. That was something that you guys said. It was, so I called in and then right before I walked to the door.
Yeah, okay, I.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Alright, what are you doing? Are you listening? I mean, what are we doing here?
Well, yeah, so I basically I do have a runway, so I called into the meeting as I was driving over. Yeah, so I was listening to the meeting as I'm driving. As soon as I started walking, I put it out, said picture. What did it say up there? Oh, really? You won't just accept any requests?
No, I'm gonna leave it.
Really?
Well, I, I, I just, I think that's, that's.
True, true.
So, is, keep, you know, change the manipulation to work with people.
I see, okay, gotcha.
As she's saying, we are, people. Yeah.
Anything, anything.
Well, listen, I'm, I'm gonna access.
I'm talking to somebody. Brad's gonna get up here, sit down already. We're gonna try and jam her to satting yet. Well, the thing is too, is that I know people are sending, they're gonna wind up on sister, on sisters before farmers started. Or if they got, when the farmers started, they could have, if it wasn't for your case, you'd never be on a system. I'm not, I'm with them.
RWD, come on, give us some credit.
We, I, I do this firm as well. When I bought my place out in Belgrade, I had a well. And Hart Mountain came in and buried their lateral, I'm going right. You know, thank God Northridge Royal Water came out there, I'd be on a system.
Yeah, we're gonna roll here. Alright, next up, we're going to, what did we skip first?
Uh, we skipped.
Seal bids for the way, waste scale replacement?
Yes.
You got one bid?
I do.
Okay. This is for the Powell landfill?
Yes, sir. So this is to replace our scales at the Powell landfill. We've actually had trouble there with them. That type of power could be changed.
Yeah, we did skip.
That's to, uh, yeah, look at the bids. We're sure they have no way out for one person. We still just, we've got, uh, engineering associates prefer that they wanna take a little time to look at it, so we'll make sure it will give that opportunity. So we did receive the one bid from, uh, two sisters contracting their local here out of Kobe. Uh, let's see. What bid was? The sugar. I guess it's been right there for the bottom line. Total bid, uh, all items, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars, zero cents.
We can review it, but we're, 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 what we, what we budget.
Yeah, that's, that's over what we budgeted. I think we thought that we'd need to be about in the seventy-five thousand range as to, uh, anywhere we're at, so, uh, that's something we'll go back and take a look at and reconsider. Uh, whether we wanna rebuild, back, follow, whether the price is gonna get better, that's hard to say.
Mr. Magel, where did you, your approximate, where did you get that figure of eighty thousand dollars? Was that what we've done in the past or is it from somebody else who was ordered recently or?
Yeah, that were, that was from, uh, engineering associates or engineer, they, they based on, uh, you know, current prices of what they're looking at for concrete, uh, that's the, for reusing the scale platform. We're also purchasing the, uh, uh, low sales and all that, so that's out of that. But it's pretty, I think, based on their estimate of, it's, it's very hard to estimate these days, if you want to say, in a certain business. But with concrete and with.
Think you can compare with the bids, uh, where they were way over and such?
That's what I, I really, we can, and I, that's why I wanna, uh, yeah, I'll say.
We'll take that, take that, review it, look at it and then come back and.
That's all we need.
Cause we have to, if it's a have to right now, if it's something we can hold off for a while, but go ahead and take that.
Yeah, I'll let them look it over and we'll see what they say.
Okay. Next item that we're gonna work on is approval of C back, just for a project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so last week, opened the bids for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one C back work, which is congested vacation air quality. Uh, we receive funding every year for, I say every year, it's the last two or three years we've done that, for dust suppressant, dust control. Uh, we just completed some work over in the Clark area. Uh, just to kind of for the public's, uh, pers, uh, information. Uh, we, that is like an eighty-twenty split where we get eighty percent of the funding through the state for that, for that, uh, for those projects. Ben reported it was ninety-twenty, so which is it?
It can't be ninety-twenty, it's gonna be.
Or ninety-ten, last week?
Yeah, he did.
I, did he? Well, I would go with Ben's number then, because I've covered.
Ninety-ten?
Uh, I should, I was eighty-twenty, but I, but I just, I'll confirm that. I'll confirm that. We've got, we've all over the place. Uh, yeah, I am covering for Ben here, but we did receive three bids for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one work, which we are about a year behind. Uh, and this will be for dust control up in, uh, Sunlight Basin area and for, uh, Willwood area. Uh, but the three bids we received, uh, for Dust Busters Incorporated, Wyoming Earthwork Corporation, Desert Belt. Uh, the low bid was, uh, Desert Belt, uh, based out of Riverton. And, uh, they were about twenty-six hundred dollars less than the next low bid, which was Dust Busters. Both were Wyoming companies, so the five percent did not cover the play. Uh, but we're recommending after looking at everything, uh, rewarding the contract, Dust Busters Incorporated, uh, they're. Their bid was, um.
I said Dust Buster.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Desert Mountain Corporation, so recommend awards to Desert Mountain. Their price was five thousand two hundred seventy two dollars and ninety six cents per mile, which works out to be, uh, based on fourteen point seven seven miles. Seventy seven thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars sixty two cents. That is within our, the budget and the bound and the amount that we were awarded, which is around eighty eight thousand, so we're, we're relevant that. So we recommend award, we've worked with them in the past, spent three, four years, but they have no word of our capital.
Mr. Teal.
Mr. Chairman, regardless of whether it's a twenty match or a ten percent tax, it's still a good deal, I thought they said. So far, we're still running some numbers to see the longevity of it, that we can save. But based on our estimates, it's a good deal and therefore I move to award the, counter the, the award to Q-MAX to Desert.
Second, further discussion. All those in favor?
I'm.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna just go ahead and roll right into opening the steel bids for the landfill waste compactor. Discuss the land use RFP afterwards.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, so we get, we got. On the landfill compactor, this is a bit of a change door operation, I'm moving towards a. A different type of method for how we're compacting the waste. Looking at a landfill compactor, we're now at our, our kind of generate where it makes sense for the duties. We, uh, we sent out requests for bids to, uh, let's see, CAP, Bowbag, Aljon. CMI, Bobo. Make sure, oh, it is, uh, Tana. So anybody that we go up that thinks compactor, we've got, and actually communicated with them. And so we, we got good representation. We ended up receiving two bids. First one's for tractor equipment, TNE, out of, uh, out of Warland. Also part of, uh, buildings to, to do that. So this is for an eight sixteen compactor. The bid for one wage compactor, five hundred ninety five thousand, nine hundred eighty seven dollars and forty two cents. And I will go ahead and read the big end list on the buyback option for two years. A hundred ninety three thousand one hundred. Three, three years, one hundred sixty two thousand five hundred. That's at six thousand hours. And then, uh, five years, one hundred twelve thousand three hundred, that's ten thou, less than ten thousand. It's, I think, provided of twenty five weeks for motor bay. The other one that was received. So we received the, uh. Manufacturer's Tana, is that the word it comes from? Homekeeper's Equipment. Out of Lubbock Texts. They make, uh, you got a panel machine. It's just for reference, they're using that machine, other charities, it's really, and it got their information. Uh, their bid. It's for a model two thousand twenty two H two sixty eco, five hundred sixty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And we did list a buyback for three hundred fifty thousand dollars out of that two years, that's under four thousand hours. Uh, buyback for three years, two hundred fifty thousand, at less than six thousand hours. And then in five years, uh, less than, uh, our hundred twenty five thousand for less than ten thousand hours. And we like that, we purposely did not wanna come back on this to make, there's a lot to digest, so we'll come back off the fifth. Uh, we are gonna go up and take a look at the panel machine, up in the chair, and it's a little bit different. It's, it has the two wheels instead of the four compactor wheels, so. On the second bid, one of the. Uh, delivery date, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second machine, where's the nearest dealer?
The nearest dealer, I wanna say they are out of Texas, we'll have to sort all that out. They have a program where they send a.
Connects.
Connects container that's got all of the parts, or what they, what they consider possible parts that could, could possibly go wrong.
So they send a connect full parts to your site, then they contract with a local. Mechanic to train them on repairing their equipment and certify them. That's, that's local side. Okay. I just would like to really, have you get really considered that, and go over, that it was service. Because you know, equipment. Services.
Absolutely, and we, we put all that in our bids specs, and that's part of what we'll look at. That, that would be our.
Yes, sir.
Do we have like five minutes?
No.
Can I take it anyway? Yeah. I, I just, this is a public site. I mean, this is a very large purchase for the county, and I don't think people are aware of why we're doing that. So Greg and Brian, real quick, can give an explanation of what our payback on this is gonna be?
Yeah, so you don't have all the numbers in front of me, but historically, we, we, we were spending billions of dollars on a lighter system. Repair, a cell, and a retail collection system. Uh, that airspace that you use, you have a bottom and a top that you're building, and that's a finite number, so the more waste you can pack into a cubic yard of airspace. Um, that saves the county money over the month. We're in that eight hundred pounds, uh, per cubic yard range right now of what we're doing. With this, we can get up to, you know, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred pounds per cubic yard. You know, in that range, which again extends the life of the cell, extends the life of the landfill. And, you know, it whether lowers the tipping piece, it will at least extend how far out before we have to raise.
One of those is part of the factors, I'm sure you're fact, you're working on there, is we need a piece of equipment compacting regardless.
Exactly.
Of, of what, what that, with that equipment's doing. So we're gonna be buying, we're using a track loader right now.
Exactly.
For compaction and your, your, so there's a cost of buying a truck, track loader. It's gotta be balanced against buying the compactor and what the, what it all pencils out to at the end.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's just a change in of the, the operation.
And we're, and we're hoping that it's gonna stuff the plastic bag down there a little bit.
Well, that's something too, just being able to have better compaction, better surface. When we put our, our daily cover down, we're anticipating that in the industry standard, yeah, it will help us control.
Okay. Thank you. Review it, come back at a later date. I guess it may be October fifth, we'll make a decision.
That's where we're hoping for.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna go ahead, we changed the agenda a bit, I appreciate you guys helping us out there, thank you. Go ahead, we'll have you here for final approval and adoption of Park County Wyoming Natural Resource Management Plan.
Warning, man. So we should have received the final copy of the Natural Resource Management Plan for state and federal lands in Cook County, Wyoming. As you know, you already held a public hearing and received full comment on this particular effort. And we have just put the final version of the plan out for a little bit longer for people to take a look at before you consider adoption.
We, for the public's knowledge, we did take those comments.
We did.
We did make some changes based upon those comments, we put it back out there, and so what we have in front of us is the, is the final product. Which home field.
Mr. Chairman, a question came up a week or two ago about the cost, and we did come in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars supported by the state here at forty nine. Close forty nine dollars, so.
Yeah, the state allocated up to fifty thousand dollars per time to redo these natural resource management plan. They did say if that was not used, you could come back if you needed it, but it appears we didn't need it, so. Right along.
Mr. Jordan, just, just one quick comment. Uh, this is a long process, took a lot of work, and I wanna give credit where credit's due. First of all, I wanna thank Kalasik for all the work on it, he did a great job. And also the committee.
Second.
Moving seconded, further discussion. The fact that it just, it, uh, talks about feral horses. Very another feral horse.
That was a really good compliment.
It, it was called for that flower. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I will. Pauline would have had one right away. To say.
I'm not surprised.
Oh, and I, I wanna thank you for all your work.
Definitely. Alright, so next up, we're going to appoint. Selection committee for Park County Land Use Plan, RFP. Give us a little background.
So as it states in the RFP, which came directly from the procurement policy, um, for projects such as this, we have a selection committee consisting of five individuals. The planning and zoning department director, like me, uh, at least one commissioner, at least one. So probably two. Um, a disinterested department head or elected official, a disinterested county employee, and one at large unbiased member that is not a county employee. I would like to add to this that the selection committee, um, shall remain undisclosed. Uh, so it, the public will not know who the, the committee members are. So I know you wanted to discuss it, but in here it says the members of the selection committee shall not be disclosed to submitting consultants. So therefore, I believe that means that the selection committee will not be announced to the public because they don't wanna lobby.
That's in our.
Well, now.
That's, that's in our, that's in our RFP, and that's in the, I believe it's in the procurement policy as well.
I did, Mr. Chairman, I, sorry, I, I read the, the procurement policy, I did not see that.
It's in our RFP, so we, in either case, we would have to honor that.
It's in our, our, RFP, the selection committee will remain anonymous. Won't be announced to the public.
It says will not disclose.
Yeah.
It's going public.
Then I'm gonna have, we'll have to do it in executive session.
I guess what I'm saying is, I know you wanted to discuss the, the development of a committee, but I wanted to just read that out of the RFP, see what we're.
Okay. So how do you guys wanna handle that?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that the committee is not lobbied by the companies that may be submitting on this, and that's why that's probably in there. So that if you're on the committee, don't start getting phone calls and emails from the company that wants to persuade you they're the best. They want it open and honest and one review as to what they said, yeah? So it kinda makes sense that that would happen, but if that's what's, you know, that's what's on the idea we need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I. I don't agree with that, and I wish I would have thought that in our RFP before we said, because this committee is just a selection. They don't, they can decide. They come to us with a recommendation, and the decision will be made here as to who we select. Um, I, for fairness and openness, uh, I don't see why we need to have these committee meetings. And it's, cause it's not in our procurement policy. It is in our RFP.
I would review the procurement policy to be sure. I'm not sure that it didn't come out of the procurement policy.
Well, I would like to confirm that, I, but I don't.
I mean, we're, we're not gonna do anything on this until the fifth, October. It's still.
But the date for review, Mr. Chairman, the date for review is the other September.
Yep.
So no, so September twenty eighth is the question and answer period for the consultants? But the RFP, or the proposals are not due until October twenty second, so there's time.
Yep.
There's time for you to make your committee selections.
Alright, well, we'll do that, I'll discuss that. We'll look at the, look at the procurement policy. But it's staked specifically in this RFP that's gone out that that.
Shall not be disclosed to submitting consultants, which I would assume then means that they wouldn't be disclosed, period, because the committee consultants got, you see the public. That's just my assumption.
Okay, well, I'll look, and I'll look into that more, we'll bring this back up on October fifth. Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, are we not even going, are we not doing anything then? I mean, can you discuss the selection, just not nominate or not finalize on it?
Yeah.
Government network.
But if we state, if we state names, it's not saying. Other, we already said it, might be, might be Commissioner Teal.
Are you campaigning at this point?
Yeah.
Am I campaigning? Yeah, this is, yes.
Well, then we have.
Let's get this thing done. You were talking about, uh, uh, land use plans, it's time became, before I was a.
But it's, we're not changing anything, we're not changing the date of selection. We're not changing, the committee is not doing anything at this, the committee's not gonna start working tomorrow. You see what I'm saying?
I won't start working till we get out.
No, I understand if, if, if this was time sensitive, but we, the dates are, the dates have already been set of when everything's gonna happen. And that's not the point of the committee today.
What are our options to removing that or amending the RFP?
Um, I'll have to look through the RFP. I do think there's some statements in here, but we can talk with friends, we're to see what we're able to do. I can read through the language up here to see what it says about us modifying terms of the RFP. I think you have the ability to do that, but I would not do that without consulting friends or it first.
Alright. Well, I just got you guys a break, so. We got a public hearing at eleven fifteen. We're not yet.
Do you wanna just, you know?
I'm gonna, yeah, I told him.
You don't have a reservation yet?
Commissioner Teal keeps asking these questions, and I.
Thanks.
Right now. Mr. Teal, he's. Well, at least you listened. No. That doesn't mean he listened, he didn't.
No, to listen to her, he, he understood what she said.
So I'm just nervous of one more review. Now, so your resolution number for.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll get him, I'll go back through everything right now.
That's alright. But if we're able to stride it on there.
It's not time sensitive, is it?
No, it's, it's already written, so once these.
I'm just, I'm just being smart. Leo, are you coming into my neighborhood?
Uh, quite possibly, yes. Are you down by the river?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
I just saw you park there. Yes, you're in there for.
Yeah, yeah, are you, are you riding that cul-de-sac? Oh, definitely.
Two doors to the east.
Okay, two doors to the east, gotcha.
So.
Gotcha.
Calvin, that's a little next door.
Yeah, they put five kids.
Mine.
Yep. Nice, yeah, I'm excited about it. Seems like a nice little neighborhood.
It is, yeah, it's pretty quiet.
Yeah. Good deal.
Yeah, it's kinda transient.
Yeah.
First hand, first demand. It seems to be, it's a good amount of turnover.
Really?
That's the nature of that.
Yeah.
Yes, baby.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, no, I'm excited to be able to, you know, watch, grab to eat. Watch to, or grab a drink if I want, and then have, get to the river access right there, too.
Alright, so you're on there, you've got a, you're really.
Where am I staying?
At the. Fairfield and Jeffville.
Where's that at? You and I were there.
So it's South Bluey Highway.
Yeah, we did, there's like four big hotels.
Uh, or, I agree, South Douglas. Highway fifty nine. Yeah. So, they're flying around.
Yes, it is that time of year.
It is, yes.
Adam, Adam, I'm glad I'm getting a second, second migration of miller.
They are coming back.
There wasn't much in the spring, but yeah, they.
Yeah.
Have you guys seen the increase of mosquitoes, just general flies?
You know what?
Big mosquitoes, just general mosquitoes flying around, like bigger.
You know, I tell you, my, my place out in Belkirk, I never had a mosquito in my life until this, this summer.
Really?
Were you kidding? I'm turning that air being like.
Out on the field, never, we got deer flies, which I'm allergic to, and horse flies, amazingly.
Yeah.
But just sure the mosquito just ate me up.
Yeah.
I mean, I have to put on mosquito repellent to go out there and take the fight.
Wow.
And then we got these little, little tiny no see them now. And then we got these little, little tiny nosem nuts.
Yeah.
That's like driving nuts, gotta get under my hat. Bite my scalp, get near, turn bad, you know, it's pretty personal.
Yeah, and it's just interesting, um, the weather cycles will kind of help or hurt them. Back, somewhere, two years ago, there was just a crazy amount of miller moths at the beginning of the summer. It was a ridiculous amount, yeah. But it didn't seem too much till recently.
Everyone, I guess, was in the first part of August, a lot got on their deck, didn't turn any lights or anything at first, or something. Before I knew it, I was going, what's going on? I mean, before I get back in the house, I was chewed up. Chewed up. See, you're now, yeah, Trapper was telling me, talk about moths. Trapper was telling me when he was on a sheep hunt, up on the north side, he was on, he didn't tell me exactly, but there was a, there's a moth site up there. And he actually watched twenty individual grizzly bears on one moth site.
Really?
Recently?
Yeah.
Recently?
Yeah, when he was on, when he was.
Two weeks ago. This, this is here, two weeks ago.
I looked at, over here to go, I was up when they had a rod, a sheep hunt, and there's a moth, there's a moth site.
I think we, we should have the moths be protected. I mean, the moths should be protected.
Well, definitely. You know, and that, that's the thing. When you come from Nebraska, I don't know how they do that, they fly all the way out to here. And they lay their eggs, and then they fly back in Nebraska. And they kill them like hell in Nebraska, they spray it for them and everything else. So, sheep hunt, there's a go up rod, it's a creek, and I saw, I, on one moth site, I love that with the.
I can't even imagine twenty.
Yeah.
Either.
And I, I tell you, you watch the bear, those moth sites, they're like a, like a tracode.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they'll take one paw and go like this, push a boulder like that, and roll it down the damn mountain.
Yep. They're super focused usually, too. We were up at Trot Peak earlier in the summer, there was one that was doing that. And, uh. It's just going on nonstop for hours straight.
So, you, uh, this one's here. For a while, that one.
Hopefully, we got everyone.
Well, I put a first.
Oh, you, you should have been here for, for, for. Eleven, eleven, you're there. I go eleven, eleven, you're.
I know I pushed for the procurement policy. We didn't have a year and a half ago.
Well, I mean.
And I understand the rules for some of the, the, sometimes I think maybe we made too damn many rules, it's because.
That's good. Come on, over there.
It defines the committee, but it does not have that statement.
That they need to be.
Right, so that's in the RFP always, but I might.
Yeah, it's, I don't, I don't like it.
I read it.
It's in the RFP.
And it doesn't.
Shouldn't, yeah.
Probably not. Yeah.
Probably be a thousand. Is it in the, in the RFP?
I don't know, I'll have to check with Brian. I mean, it doesn't affect that much, it just affects us, so it may not, it may not take much.
It what?
It doesn't affect the people bidding on it, it affects us. Something that they're bidding on.
Yeah, if we change our RFP, it's not, it's not a factor.
So, I don't want to, we can, yes, so you're saying we can just leave it out?
Well, we need to clarify it with Mr. Thor.
Because it's already been put out there.
Right.
Personally, I think the selection committee is a waste of time, and the selection committee should be fine right here. That's my.
If you see the venture fire, please, if you want to read all that through, I mean, well, I'm not reading it again, that whole town.
Well, I.
Well, we.
I don't know. Just very hard to do that. Cool. Is that secret?
I know. I asked her who was on it, and she was really amazed, she said, do what they represented.
You're not feeling.
She here. She said.
Still are.
Still are.
Scott, did you hear my pen or anything? What that, did you hear my pen or anything? Our records is nice.
Don't care.
Don't leave him more of a.
Right there. He said, I'm not sure what hospital he's in. It's spelled for active brain trauma. Which is the biggest concern. Three neck fracture, some. Chips off of his third vertebrae, broken arm. I know the working the power, but I don't know.
No. Yeah, most major part of that rough stock rodeo was. Well, seems that we don't have a full house for this public hearing, we're gonna go ahead and get it started. Up next is public hearing on Cedar Mountain View Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan Review. In building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the applicant for this, Brett Tilley. This property is in the G O five zoning district, the planning area is the Lower South Fork, you did receive an application for this minor of July fourteenth of this year, including all the information that you see there, including the sketch plan. And we did get a revised sketch plan on August twelfth of this year, and that's in figure one, you all had a chance to see that. And the applicant requests approval of this minor, which will be four lots, and each will be approximately ten point four one acres, it'll, they'll all be for residential use. The location that's shown in figure two, it's approximately seven miles southwest of Cody. A ton of parcel of land, just about three tenths, okay, three tenths miles north of Road Sixty New, which is Diamond Basin. Parcel has an address of thirty nine Starview Drive, it's bounded on the south by Kestrel Way, Lane, on the other side is, um, on the other side of it is Foothill Drive. And the, as I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the zoning district is G R five, and the lot sizes proposed are consistent with the G O five zoning district conventional subdivision in this case. Neighbor land use, you can see that in figure three, neighboring land uses are primarily residential and agriculture, there are several subdivisions that surround this parcel. Terms of site characteristics, the parcel is currently vacant, partially irrigated. That's shown in figure, the topography is shown in figure four. Relatively flat, however, the property just south of this proposed subdivision does have some modest changes in elevation. I believe when you come from, when you come from Diamond Basin Road, you, you go up in elevation, and then to get to the parcel, you come back down. From the notices, notice that the subdivision is published in the Cody Enterprise on July twentieth to July twenty seventh. Then the notice for this meeting, a, the public hearing notice was also in the Cody, published in the Cody Enterprise. That occurred on August thirty first and September fourteenth. The notice to neighbors, uh, that was mailed on Au- August twenty sixth, the staff report was sent to you, was sent to the applicant. Um, and was put on the website for public consumption, we notified all of the agencies we're required to for subdivision, and then additional agencies that we thought might have a role of interest. Park County School District Six responded, Park, uh, Park County Fire District Number Two responded, T C T responded, um, Solid Reds, Two Tough Guys, and U P S, they all responded that they can provide services. Um, specifically, the Fire District responded with a list of the, their, um, a list of their apparatus they would use, and they requested any roads or road crossings have legal load construction. Terms of Public Works, we had several responses from them. They identified Starview Drive as adequate for two more residences, Public Works also identified Foothills Drive as adequate, adequate for two more residences. I know, um, I know at least in one of their responses, Public Works stated that the subdivision does have legal access, they said Foothills Drive. Um. And Public Works also recommend that the developer be required to participate in a road improvements agreement, we said we agree with that. Public Works said that they understand that no additional access is, um, to county roads opposed from this development other than what's already occurring, and Public Works will not require runoff or road control plan. Black Hills Energy said they do not have any, um, capacity in the area, and I don't believe there's any natural gas in that area. Code Conservation District, they did respond with a Soul's Report, the summarization letter we shared with you. Rocky Mountain Power, they responded, they have existing electricity service near the proposed subdivision, they will be able to provide electricity to each lot. We passed an initial inspection, found the presence of noxious weeds, and we plan will be, um, required, and that has been received, or that has been approved, and we do have a copy of that. Park County Treasurer said taxes are paid in full, Lake irrigation district, they, we have, um, the most, um, current written response was an email from August fifth. They said they would meet on eleventh to look at this, I did talk, Mr. Chairman, I did talk to Mary Reed last week, she said they did meet, they did approve this irrigation plan. She, she basically gave me some summaries, she said on this parcel. The applicant has everything in place that the irrigation district needs to see. Mary also said that the applicant has, um, told them where the irrigation water is coming from to get to this parcel, they were satisfied with that. I guess that they did approve this irrigation plan, Mary also told me that in a conversation with the neighbor, there was some concern about easements offside this parcel. And, and Mary told her that that is really not, in her opinion, it wasn't something that we need to address. Northwest Roll Water responded with an email, it said they have existing service on the parcel. And you're, um, serving one lot, and the other three lots can be served, so the plan is to have Northwest Roll Water serve these lots, and evidently that water is available. Game and Fish responded, they don't have any specific concerns with the subdivision, again, they commented they have concerns with the number of subdivisions in the county. Terms of public comments, we, we've had two written public comments, we shared those with you, one letter expressed concerns about traffic, noise, irrigation, septic, roads, type of structures and their uses. The other letter expresses concerns about traffic and road maintenance, and some of those similar comments were expressed during the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will say on August eighteenth during P and Z, a member of the public had specific concerns regarding. And this is a summary that, uh, we went back and looked at minutes, had specific concerns regarding irrigation easements, irrigation pipe improvements, and irrigation pipe recorded agreements. And also, uh, this individual stated that he and other neighbors should have been notified of the irrigation meeting held on August eleventh, of course, we have nothing to do with that. And I mentioned what, what we, um, the, the irrigation plan has been, uh, approved in my comments with Mary Reed. Pre-app meeting occurred on January twenty eighth of this year, we did receive an application, obviously, the fee has been paid. Title report of, with commitment date of March eleventh has been received. I mentioned black, uh, there's no gas in the area, Rocky Mountain Power will provide electricity, obviously, or, Mr. Chairman, you know from reading this that, uh. A subdivision improvements plan will be required, we are anticipating that. In terms of hazards on the property, we know of no, um, essential hazards, landsides, deep slopes, rock balls, or anything like that. Again, I did mention that Code Conservation District has responded, obviously, you saw the sketch plan. In terms of wastewater, subsurface evaluations were completed on proposed lots one and two. Perp rates were fourteen to thirty-two minutes per inch, uh, very reasonable. Excavation cuts were made, same lots to just over ten feet, groundwater was not discovered, that was done in June. So, it appears like, should this be approved and lots be developed, conventional systems might be sufficient. Domestic waters, I said, will be, be provided by Northwest Roll Water District. In terms of ag impact, some of this property appears to be, um, undeveloped and then disturbed, some of the property appears to be in ag production. Unknown whether the property has been used historically to grade livestock, of course, the applicant will be required to comply with beating pests, they'll be required to comply with, uh, irrigation district. The applicant stated he doesn't expect this subdivision to introduce any pest, litter, or domestic head disturbances. And we don't, and the applicant has said he doesn't expect that approval of the subdivision to impact neighboring ag properties in a negative fashion. This property, however, is not in an ag overlay district, actually, it's, I believe it's not in any overlay district. Terms of design and improvement standards, we, we did make some specific comments. Lot fridge requirements of hundred feet have been met, lot lines are at right angles, easements have been provided, and are at a necessary sufficient width. Non-early roads are required or proposed, as I mentioned, this will require a subdivision improvements agreement. And in H O A, is required to address, uh, shared improvements. I mentioned Public Works is recommending a, a road improvement, um. Plan, and, um, we agree with that, both roads, both on the east and on the west. Mr. Chairman, we have some staff findings, we have some recommended conditions, we're happy to answer questions, if I have.
Yeah, I, I've got the two questions, one real quick, is, is Lakeview Irrigation District, the part of irrigation on subdivision.
Commissioner Childman, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember that's ever been said.
Okay, so anyway, you say that their plan has been approved, but you, but you don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, and we've not received a copy of the plan.
Okay, and they, and the other number of the question is just a point of clarification, uh, in your presentation, you said the game and two did not have any specific concerns about this project, and they do.
Mr. Commissioner Childman, you know, there's.
I mean, that's fine, that's not a big deal.
I, yeah, I think you're right, I remember reading.
Yeah, they do, they're, they're, they obviously have a. Yeah, they do, they're, they obviously have a relatively large resident population of deer in the area.
You're correct.
And a concern about spread of CWD between those deer and migrating deer.
You're right, exactly.
I understand a concern, but I'm not sure what we can do about it.
I missed that, yeah, I apologize. You're absolutely correct, though, they did have specific concerns in this area.
Further questions from staff, or staff from us? Public hearing, if you have any public comment, yes, or state your name.
My name is Steve Smith. I own the property on 12 Foothill Drive, I'd like to send this letter. Requesting, I was, had a previous conversation with the Irrigation Board. I attended the last commissioner meeting, and there was a couple of things that disturbed me. First one was Mr. Tillery, when he presented the plan, said that he was not going to have covenants on this property. That is very concerning to me, since there are deeded covenants on this property, I have a copy of those. And specifically, my concern is, I'm not concerned about architecture, I'm not concerned about how many pests they have. I am concerned about how they water from their irrigation.
That's not addressed by Esther.
Well, I'm asking for three things. Mr. Tillery said he's not going to convey those deeded covenants to the next owner. And I think that's a very problematic.
That would be, that would be a civil issue. It wouldn't be an issue that we address, we don't address covenants.
Okay, how about easements?
May I pardon?
How about easements?
If easements, any easements that are recorded with the property will remain, as far as I know, those remain recorded with the property.
Yes, sir. My concern with theirs, Mr. Tillery stated at the zoning commission that he was going to bypass existing easements, irrigation easements, and take the water directly from the head gate.
Again, that's an irrigation issue, sir.
I talked to, just to clarify, I talked to Corky, Ditchwater, they gave him no such permission?
Sir, that's, we don't address irrigation, irrigation, you know, when irrigation water comes from, we don't have any, any rights over that. What, as I'm saying, that's an irrigation district.
My question is, yes, sir, I understand. I understand the Water Board doesn't have that, the Irrigation Board doesn't have that. They indicated, I think there's some confusion here. I talked to Mary, I talked to Corky, both in the Irrigation Board, he said they must follow existing irrigation. That's not his plan. His plan is completely different. My request is, if you're going to zone this, can you put in there? If you're going to approve this, can you put in stipulation that in fact you meet existing irrigation easements? So if he comes on my property and starts digging, what?
All irrigation and water laws just have to do with State Engineers Office. And we, we can't, we can't tell a property owner what to do with existing irrigation rights.
I called the State Engineers Office, and they gave me no response. They said it was a local issue. So what is my recourse when he comes and starts destroying my property?
Mr. Chair, I just want to add, so if there are easements on the property, of course, they're required to be on the plat. And so we rely on the surveyor, the project surveyor, to ensure that that information has been provided. Even if an easement exists and has not been presented on the plat, it still is an easement by law. And so just absent of the plat, it still is what it is. And third, which I think you've tried to say multiple times, you know, the subdivision has entered into a water distribution plan with the Irrigation District that must be recorded with the plat. And so if the Irrigation District approved a particular water distribution plan, that plan will be recorded with this plat, and it's then in their hands to sort of manage what's going on there. So I think you're right on the right track, at least as far as my understanding, I believe that that is true.
So we, I do have an existing, he does have an existing easement. I just want him to follow that existing.
And that is a civil issue between you and your property owner, but he is also, he is also under, like I say, any of that irrigation is through the State Engineers Office. And if, if you, if he has an easement through your property, or you have an easement through his property, that is the easement where his water comes from, or your water comes from. And he has a right to approve that easement, you have the right to procure it. We don't have the right to tell him to stay on that easement. That's a civil issue. If he decides to go off that easement, I don't believe it is our, we have any regulation that says he has to stay on it. That's irrigation issues.
Okay, so I go back to the State Engineers to make sure that they follow that easement that's recorded on the plat. It was a 2008 plat.
That would, that would be where I'd start.
Okay, thank you.
Further public comment?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Zengfong, as your associates, I'm here representing Mr. Tillery. Just a point of clarification on covenants. Mr. Tillery stated he was not going to add additional covenants. He is well aware that he is subject to any previously existing legally binding covenants. As far as irrigation, there's access to utilities easement, whichever route is that on the Foothills, Foothills Drive to the west, and then there's an irrigation easement across, what's your name, sir?
Steve Smith.
Mr. Smith's property, so there are multiple easements, and that's, Mr. Tillery is working with Irrigation District to decide how to. Okay, put that together, thank you.
Further public comment? There are none in your table. Move, move, move. Moving secondly, closed public hearing, fellows in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, I will refer to your question. Do you have a reminder for the public to get the panel review?
Set, board discussion.
Moving secondly, further discussion.
My question is with support staff, I know that there's not an ag overlay district, but is there any reason you can't have a condition to how the plat that I want, Brighton Farmer Ranch, had on the plat?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Would Commissioner Childen, to be true, could modify his motion to include the right part back on the plat?
Yep. Okay, so.
Just my second.
Okay, moving secondly, further discussion? Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, okay.
It was, it was already a condition.
It was already a condition.
It was already a condition.
I know, we recommended.
I understand.
Number two, unvined.
No. Five, right, yeah.
Okay, moving right along. We don't that way, but.
Thanks.
Let's see. Seventeen months away.
In the mail or?
Yeah.
I never thought of that.
Excellent. That's a little work man. Is that how that works? Home. Just home. Alrighty, that will be a few minutes.
I thought we were pretty much. We're telling you that on all of the county. Yeah. Yeah, we tried to process this as a recommended condition.
Alright, 11:35, someone we're working with, move forward. Next up, we have some public hearing proposed major subdivision preliminary plat review. Adrian, excuse me, Adrian, should I put my glasses on? If I have them, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant for this project is Jim Nicholson. This property is located in the GRP zoning district of planning areas Powell. We did receive the preliminary plat application, which we shared with you on June 17th of this year, including on the panel. We did, we did get revised preliminary plat on August 3rd, which that one was shared with you. The requested action is to approve this major subdivision, it will be 13 lots. And they will vary in size from 1 acre to 2.14 acres, each designated for residential use. This proposed subdivision should be approved, will vacate and divide lot 11 of the Kobe subdivision. And that subdivision was approved by county commissioners on September 11th of 2007. In terms of location, the subdivision is approximately 1 mile west of Powell. It's just over 1 half mile north of Highway 14A, and it's on the east side of County Road 11. And again, you had a chance to see in Figure 1, that preliminary plat. As I mentioned, this is in GRP, these lot sizes, as proposed, are consistent with that zoning district neighboring land use, primarily residential and agriculture. But as I mentioned, this is actually a lot in Kobe, and so the Kobe subdivision is just on the south side of this proposed subdivision. Site characteristics, this land is level, vacant, vacant, and currently irrigated ag use. This property is within a mile of the city of Powell, so municipal review from Powell was requested, they looked at this. And we, I think we shared this with you, they didn't have any concerns, and in fact, the Powell City Council, Mr. Chairman, actually approved this, even though they didn't need to, they essentially approved it. So to me, that means they had no concerns. Notice of intent, the subdivision was published on February 4th and February 11th of this year. Notice of public hearing for this meeting was in the platter view, that occurred on August 13th and September 14th. On August 26th of this year, we sent the notice to neighbors. And this staff report was sent to all of you, was sent to the applicant, the representative, and was, was put on the website. Agency note referrals, agency notices were all met. Postal Service, TCT, Park County School District Number 1, and the Park County Fire District Number 1 really has no concerns with this, they'll be able to provide services. Conservation Districts, they did provide a SOAS report, a summarization letter. We shared that letter with you. Rocky Mountain Power, they have no concerns with serving this proposed subdivision. And they will be able to provide power, this is a major, however, will require a subdivision improvements agreement to get power to all, to these lots. MBU, they will be able to provide gas, there is a mine in Core Lane, which was, which is in the Kobe subdivision, that will be extended to serve all these lots. Northwest Rural Water, they responded a couple of times, they, they responded with a hydraulic bottoming report on March 3rd that indicated that they have sufficient capacity and pressure to provide service to all, to these lots. Wheatland Pest, initial inspections found nonchish weeds. A long-term nonchish re-management plan therefore will be provided, to our knowledge, that's not been approved yet, but typically, it's not required to be approved till final plat. Treasurer, county treasurer said property taxes are paid in full. Wyoming Game and Fish responded, they have no concerns specifically with this subdivision. But again, they express their concerns with the number of subdivisions. Shoshone Irrigation District, they are working with the applicant on the water distribution plan. Public Works responded, we shared that letter with you, that was in early April. They talked about the road drainage report, access frontage, and some other items. And they said, Public Works said they shall be notified when road utility construction has been initiated. Again, this will require a subdivision improvements agreement. This, this subdivision, or the applicant actually, has notified the State Board of Control and the State Engineers Office regarding irrigation. They did send a water distribution plan, and they did initiate an authorization for detachment of water rights. My understanding is the detachment of water rights, and certainly I will be, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, hasn't been approved yet, therefore, the state couldn't approve the water distribution plan. So currently, the state, in their latest response, the state has said this project is inactive in their view. So nothing has been approved in regard to irrigation by the state, Mr. Chairman. YDA, I'm sorry, DEQ in a letter to June 14th said they have no adverse recommendation regarding septic systems, and they recommend the presby systems for the enhanced treatment requirement for this proposed subdivision. City Powell, I mentioned that they did respond, we've had, we've not had any public comments, Mr. Chairman. On page 7, we have a whole list of subdivision requirements for, submission requirements for preliminary plat review. As you saw, we did, we did share with you the preliminary plat, we do have drive copies of the covenants for the subdivision and bylaws for HOA, so those two things will be finalized, should this be approved. Wastewater, this subdivision is not within 40 feet of a municipal wastewater system, so on-site in-ground systems will be required, DEQ has submitted a letter of no adverse recommendation. Domestic water will come from Northwest Rural Water, as I mentioned, ag impacts. There, in terms of ag impacts, I shouldn't say, I don't remember if this was within a. So I'm going to get to ag overlay district in a minute. There will be a reduction in land available, should the subdivision be approved. Of course, the applicant will be required to comply with. Wheatland Pest and the Irrigation District and the state regarding irrigation. Should the subdivision be approved, the applicant does not believe there'll be any pests or litter or domestic pet disturbances, and the applicant does not believe that, should the subdivision be approved, it will negatively impact neighboring irrigation districts. This parcel is located in the ag overlay district, and so obviously, that gives you a chance to make any conditions either to, if you think the subdivision will affect ag, or if you think ag will affect the subdivision, gives you a chance to make conditions affecting the subdivision. I talked about water rights, it's currently with the state, I believe, requiring some additional information from the applicant. Gas will be in MBU, electricity will be brought to mountain power. I will mention that, Mr. Chairman, you all, the commissioner did approve a variance from lot frontage requirements and lot line standards. So otherwise, since that variance has been proved, that our conclusion is that the applicant and the lots are consistent with our design improvement standards. That variance was approved at a public hearing on August 3rd. I did mention this is within an ag overlay district. The P&amp;Z reviewed this preliminary plat on August 18th, they recommended approval. They had some conditions they recommended, those are on the bottom of page 12 and on page 13. We have some findings, we have some recommended conditions, we're happy to answer questions you might have.
Mr. Chair, I just have a few things related to water distribution, irrigation, and the subdivision improvements agreement. The weather, the winter time coming up. The problem is that the subdivision improvements agreement, we obviously won't enter that until preliminary plat is approved, and that's today's question. But further, the subdivision improvements agreement requires that all improvements, plans for all improvements be included as part of that subdivision improvements agreement. I have reviewed the draft of the subdivision improvements agreement, and I'd say, you know, 90%, it's good to go. The part that's been unanswered, or remains to be answered, is the irrigation system. Our rules do say that all improvements, including irrigation water distribution system, shall be designed and constructed according to new standards, and they shall be included in the subdivision improvements agreement. Their own agreement lists irrigation system, but the irrigation system was not in the construction plan. So I asked the surveyor about it, and he mentioned that they do intend to install an irrigation distribution system. The question is whether it's going to be done now by the subdivision, or if it's going to happen later by the homeowners association. He had referenced Lone Pheasant subdivision, and I guess it's some kind of a homeowners association type deal where after a certain number of lots sold, the HOA picked up and put the irrigation system in. I'm not sure I would recommend that. I can use the example of Two Vision subdivision, where to date, the irrigation improvements were not installed per the plan that was approved by the county. So I will leave that to you for consideration. Again, I don't have an SIA for me, for you to consider today, it's something that I've done on your October 5th agenda if the, if it becomes complete and is approved by Brian Swarre. But I think you may want to entertain some questions, or have some questions answered regarding the irrigation system. And again, the State Board of Control has. And again, the state board of control has stated, and I'll use their words, if there continues to be no tangible progress towards addressing the technical issues by November 25th of 2021, we will no longer continue work on this project. At that point, this project will be considered inactive in our records. And the ADWR, which is the Authorization for Detachment of Water Rights, will remain unaccepted by the board. The subdivision water distribution plan will also be considered inactive and unapproved by the state engineer. I caution potentially moving forward with irrigation system plans when we don't even have approval from the state on the water distribution plan. But it is possible the project proponent will have more information on that that we're not aware of. So we do require state board of control approval of the irrigation plan in order to approve this subdivision ultimately.
Yeah, would I address that? Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tony Shotts with Engineering Associates to address the water rights. Yes, just like Joy had mentioned, that the state engineer's office sent us that letter back. Since then, we have submitted the full package back to them for another go-around this last week. So they will have information for their November meeting for where the water distribution plan, the irrigation is going to go. And we have approval from Cheshone Irrigation District on the water distribution plan. So we know what they would like to see for the subdivision, for the irrigation part of it. As for, I don't know if you want to tackle the construction side of the question? Because yeah, we were going to ask that question too on page 16 in this packet. Conditions recommended by staff, line 667 through 670. It's condition number six. Says prior to final plat approval by the board, the applicant shall submit an appropriate subdivision improvement agreement for review and approval by the board, and shall not commence the physical layout or construction of the subdivision prior to the board approval. So Joy talked a little bit about it, but we have submitted a subdivision improvement agreement which is being reviewed. We've got approval from Public Works. I think they're on, that they can talk about it. They reviewed the drainage plan. I didn't know that irrigation was part of this. We've never had an irrigation that I know that's come before you guys, that you had to see the irrigation and the layout as long as we've had the irrigation district approve what the plan is going to be, how the water is going to get there. And they're kind of like the treated water district. They only care to where their tap is, and in this case, where their box is. And after that, it's handled by a homeowners association, how it's handled. So I guess our, come to your board is yes. The construction season is going to get bigger shortly. We started this with an application in February and had some delays on every part. Some on our side, some on trying to get to meetings through this. And the developer would like to be developing this project. And we don't understand why it has to have a subdivision improvement agreement before he can even lay out construction. He could enter out his own risk even before the final plat's done. You know, you're going to require at the final plat that all his improvements are in before you guys sign the final plat or bond it. And he doesn't want to bond it at this time. So he's still entering at his own risk that he puts utilities in and roads in and other improvements in until the final plat's approved by your group. So that's the question that we have for that.
My question to you, but how would you word condition number six to allow you to continue that?
Keep like.
I fully understand your concern and I agree, not just.
Keep line item 667. And then at 668, once it goes past the subdivision improvements agreement for review. And then take out, shall not commence physical layout and construction of the subdivision prior to their approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That is our rule. That is in the regulations, that you shall not commence build-out of subdivision improvements until board approval. And your subdivision improvement agreement addresses when those improvements should happen. If they're going to have them before final plat recording, that's bill improvements agreement. That's where they say, hey, here's what we're going to build. You okay with it? You say yes or no, and then off they go. If they choose to do the improvements after the plat is reported, then they have to have bond or letter of credit saying that, yep, after you improve it, we get to sell our lots. But we're still promising within 12 to 18 months, we're going to put these in. So that, that's regulatory. It's not, we did not make that up.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I would like to, and I'm not saying that disagree with what you want to do, but I would like something, you know, to say that it would be at his own risk.
We, we have already notified them that if they choose.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, we've already notified them that if they choose to start to commence the improvements, that it's at their own risk.
Yep, okay. For the public, though.
I just had a question on the, on the front. And maybe you said it and I rested in here. But is there an agreement that goes with the original part of the subdivision because of that road being a horseshoe type of situation?
It's in part of the homeowners association. Part of the homeowners association is tied to the original subdivision because they are lot 11 of that original homeowners association. So they work together to do the homeowners to, and it'll be that part to maintain that road will be in the homeowners association.
And, and Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding when the Kobe subdivision was approved, there was a subdivision improvements agreement, that the road was not built to the standard. And then the SIA, like all those terms expired, and the road never got built to that standard. And then so the county had to come back in and work something out to make sure that road got built. It ended up not being built to that original approved standard. And maybe Brian Edwards could speak more to that subject. But we certainly want to, we want to make sure that doesn't happen this time around, that this particular segment of the road gets built to the construction plans that have been approved or will be approved by the county. So that we don't have an issue of people buying the lots and having no road improvements, you know, that were agreed upon.
Mr. Chairman, in reference to that, I believe what, what happened was that to our standards on a chip sealed road requires two layers, just like we're getting. Right? They only did one. So the original part of the sub, the first sub, the Kobe subdivision only got one chip seal. You're planning to chip seal the other?
No, we're, we're planning to put asphalt down. And we have, and we have approval from Public Works that they like our construction plans.
Do any improvement on the Kobe?
No.
No, Kobe was taken care of. I'm just saying, this is part of the reason why we have the subdivision improvement agreements, to make sure that that's all. And then it's up to us to obviously keep up with the developer within those 12 to 18 months after the agreement to ensure that it's been built to that standard. And of course, the plat can't be recorded until that's done if they're doing build improvements, which is what they're proposing, so. Oh, and I wanted to add one more thing. The recent irrigation systems are being addressed is because they included it in their subdivision improvements agreement. It says irrigation system. And so they're proposing it, there's a plan for it. That's why I'm addressing it, because they said they're going to have an irrigation system. So that, again, it says right in the rules that all improvements, including irrigation water distribution system, have to be part of that SIA. So I didn't just randomly put it in there. They actually included it in their draft subdivision improvements agreement. And so I'm just asking for it to be included in those construction plans if it's being proposed.
You have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Public hearing for the public comment. For the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay. Let me second it. For the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing.
Mr. Point of clarification. If they're building all these improvements out themselves, what you just said was all of that has to be completed before the plat can be recorded, which means no lots are sold.
They, they have chosen to build improvements option, which means they would have to build them. Then the county would have to approve what they build before you'll then allow the final plat to be recorded. Thank you.
That's risky, I'll take that, that's risky, I'll take.
But again, they're not supposed to start construction until you approve the subdivision improvements agreement, which comes next. That, that's what they're concerned about.
Right. Which is condition six.
Yes. But I understand their concern.
What's that?
I understand their concern. It's just, it is what it is.
It is what it is. How would you like to, to see, or?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the major subdivision preliminary plat review for condition for power number six.
Okay, is there a second option?
That's the one that says they can't start until the final plat. They can't do ground breaking.
Even without that condition, they still can't, for the regulations. It's in the regulations. We put the condition in there as a reminder that next, next point of action.
Can I add a condition that says they can start? But it'd be going against the regulations.
We'd be going against our regulations. You can't, you can't know when they violate or regulate. Been there, done it.
I know, but I just, I want to help these guys out. I want them so they can get started. The weather's coming and they want to get, get the infrastructure roads and, and everything else going. And if then they want to do it all solely on their own risk, we ought to be able to find a way to help them get started. I don't think anybody has a problem with the second phase of the subdivision going on. But weather in, weather has come, they started in February. How can we help them get moved? I'll, I'll second your, I'll make a motion. Tell me how.
We don't have a second time. That's, well, that motion's gone.
Okay.
But, I mean, because this.
So for discussion, how do you make a motion to help?
You make a motion to approve it.
But then they're in violation if they start.
No, we, they, then they need to bring us a subdivision improvements agreement, correct?
Which we've done. It's been there for a month.
Which can't be approved because the irrigation system is not on the construction plans.
But what the planner just said before that was can't be approved till you even review it until after this meeting.
Which is typically how this goes.
Yes.
We, we don't do, we don't enter into a subdivision improvements agreement if the preliminary plat.
So I need some help on film. You tell me what we need to do to get this moved forward.
Thank you. So you need to approve the preliminary plat if you feel it is fit. And then we move to review and complete the SIA.
Which is going to take the happen lit.
But again, I can't take it to Scoret until it's complete. And it's not complete until the irrigation system information is on the construction plan.
So how do you guys want to address that?
I'll have plans this week, but that's saying that he can't start and start until October 5th, when you guys review it again.
So I have to, once I have the complete plans and Brian Edwards has signed off on them, I take it to Scoret for his approval, which could be a day, could be a week.
And how long have they, so he's had, you've had this plan for how long?
I've had the plan since August 26th. It's not complete. And I didn't even know Brian Edwards had, well, actually, I didn't know Brian Edwards signed off on it. But I don't have a complete plan and I don't have irrigation approval. I don't have irrigation, I don't have approval of the irrigation.
How long have they known they didn't have a complete plan?
Friday.
So but again, it, it's been, what, how many weeks? But again, I don't have irrigation approval.
So what if we took irrigation off of the subdivision's improvement agreement?
We can't, because it says right here, all improvements, including an irrigation water distribution system, have to be part of that plan. I, I'm not trying to complicate it. I'm just trying to do what it says. And the subdivision improvements agreement says irrigation system. But the irrigation system was nowhere in the construction plan.
Is there any process by which we can do a variance on the back's requirement right now, or a, I don't know how you word it, but do some type of variance to allow us to move forward contingent on receiving that irrigation plan? If you said irrigation plan really does not affect what they want to do with starting different strip roads, is that true?
I guess it comes down to, do you want to have a subdivision improvements agreement, a build improvements agreement for the ones they want to do now? And then have a bond one for what's left? I don't know. I've not encountered that situation. I would have to, I would have to check with SFRD maybe to see what we could do on that.
How fast could that take effect if you, I understand if I can give a switch word. But if we were to, to say, we'll give you a bill agreement for this portion if you will bond the irrigation portion, how long would that take? And when could we deal with it?
Well, so it'd be a matter of amending the current SIA to remove the irrigation system item or block it out. And then it would go before you, well, first it would go to Scoret, which would be a quick review, and then to you for approval.
So that would be October 5th at this soonest.
That's your next meeting. And typically, this is how it goes. We get preliminary plat approval, and then we move to SIA.
If we did the preliminary plat now, is the SIA a public hearing or not?
We always put it on your regular meeting agenda. It's not a very.
I was trying to figure out whether we could do that portion of the SIA this afternoon. Separately, have to put in one to approve.
If I could get Scoret's approval by this afternoon to do the build-out of the road, utilities, all the other improvements, excluding irrigation system, then I would say yes, you could do that.
That's true.
Thank you. Okay.
I can't answer that Scoret's billable yet, so I can't answer that.
Well, right now, we have the motion, the motion that hasn't been made. But we need, we, we need a motion to at least approve this.
I give up.
But.
I give up on that word.
Oh, you just.
And, and by the way, Scoret does have the draft SIA. We got it. So it's not like I need to give Q and A.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve major subdivision preliminary plat as submitted.
Okay, so it's like, good and seconded. Further discussion, all those in favor? I oppose. What's your carries? Okay, now, I'll go knock on Scoret's door and hold. And if, if he's, if he's good with it, I plan to put on the generator side.
But all people go in and work on that.
Just give me a, yep. But I'd like to get this, I mean, it's, it's been. There, we, we want to start point blank, it's all the way around. But I'd like to move forward because it's, it's not going to change it all a lot.
Is Bass, he's the owner of it, he's the owner here.
Yes.
So if he could, he's going to have to sign that irrigation system part out of the SIA. And I'm going to need that notarized when he does that, so.
Yes, let's do that. I guess we'll go with you and get that done. Going out all in there.
But I don't, I, I kind of wanted to have Brian's opinion before I told him to do that. But for him to do that, now he messed things up backwards, so.
So you're headed to?
I'll head to Scoret.
And for. All right.
What we said on the off, what we said on the.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Don't touch the screen. All right, now we're unmuted.
Okay, so I'll start with the testing. The state of Wyoming bought 75,000 of these new nucleic acid purification tests. They're similar to PCR testing. As a matter of fact, the N A A T test is what is the only test that Hawaii will accept for travel. So we're having a few struggles with them, but I've given them out to doctors' offices, all three school districts. We've got them here, we've got them in Powell, and I've got some left. I'm doing some work with one of the Forest Service guys because they've got a bunch of people coming in and out of town. And then at the same time, the antigen tests that the state has, they must have a great number of them because I obtained 600 last week for Powell Valley. And then I got another 600 this week for Cody Regional, and they're going to start a limited testing program. So that's kind of where we are now. We're still trying to get everything set up. There's some unique features about the cure testing. It's a Bluetooth program and you have to register and be identified with HERSA, the feds, so we can interpositives into this program called Simple Report that is then forwarded on to the state of Cheyenne, or to Cheyenne. So lots of things going everywhere. I got the state epidemiology report this morning that reported we had 228 active cases in the county right now. And I know when I talked to Julia and Kate, they were working on about 160. So trying to reach out to all those, and that doesn't include what's going on at the schools.
Well, to try and give you a bird's eye view of what's going on, during the pandemic, a very predictable pattern has emerged. We found that when we monitor what's happening countywide with the wastewater testing, when that starts to tick up, then we see our active number of cases tick up. And we were sitting for a couple of weeks at 155 to 160. That went down yesterday at 3 to 148, and then like as Bill mentioned, it jumped back up this morning. And then it followed a week or two after that, we see increasing hospitalizations, and a week or two after that, increasing deaths. COVID-related deaths in the county so far during the pandemic. So we found the wastewater testing incredibly useful. For some reason, the city of Powell decided to discontinue wastewater testing about six weeks ago. And the state was paying $200 per test, so there was a contract involved. So we're still using the wastewater testing in Cody hoping that it is representative of the whole county and useful. Our wastewater testing and active cases will start with a dip down, of course, until this morning. So this is the repeated cycle of a spike, this spike due to the Delta variant, which is utterly increased transmissible. But there's a number of the county health officers in state that believe that S A T care patients are hospitalized. It's a little bit more variable. These people get a little sicker and a little bit longer. And the longer they're sick, the greater their chance of having a better outcome. So from a public health standpoint, we're still pushing the same basic recommendations as the one in Department of Health, which are truthful. Get vaccinated if appropriate and possible, stay home when you're sick, and...
Yeah, the last one.
Get longer.
Yeah. On vaccinations.
Where's your hands, David?
Yeah, yeah.
So that was, it was wear a mask indoors.
Yeah, indoor settings. On vaccinations, we're doing vaccinations here in the building every Wednesday. We get 70 to 80, sometimes 88 people sign up and about 50 show up. So people still aren't taking it very seriously. That's why I haven't moved it to the auditorium. We have taken billions of phone calls regarding President Biden's third dose. The Food and Drug Administration said, yeah, for 65 and older. But now the rest of the process is the Advisory Committee on Humanization Practices with the C D C. Well, now we'll get the data and try to determine when that third dose should be given to that 65 and older group. Right now, as it stands, the only people that should be getting it are in those that are getting cancer treatment or some kind of severe immunocompromised indication. The state has put on our consents an attestation saying that their physician would approve them getting a third dose. So it's the Attorney General's problem if something comes back. I know that there's been documentation put out now by H H S and Pfizer and such. If, there are companies and offices and doctors around the country that are giving a third dose, just do it. And there are indications that some feel that might be malpractice because it is outside the bounds of the recommendations for medicine at this time. So, you know, we finally got it down to a routine of phone calls that when they call in asking for that third dose, Deb and Lilly's first question is, okay, what makes you qualified for it? So, and we've managed to keep a number of those out. Now, I anticipate that our overpopulation again will start lining up and wanting to hammer out that third dose at some point in time. And most of it, what we did in January, February, kind of October, that will be the eight-month period. I personally think it's a little early. Most vaccines are early, and I'm not sure eight months is going to make that big of a difference. But I'm not going to do the research, so. And as for, we've got flu season coming up, we've got our flu vaccine, we're planning at the auditorium and the fairgrounds. And at this time, we're planning on doing side-by-side tables, COVID over here and flu over here, so that people can get COVID shot at mass flu clinics. We're still hashing out ideas about that, that's kind of our intent at this point in time.
Comment, is there any concerns by doing both of those vaccinations at the same time?
No, no. We've had that conversation a great deal, and in fact, we've got this week or next week a webinar put on by the state going over all those factors. But at this point in time, it's sort of like giving shingles and a T D A P at the same time. You can do it. But if you do one.
We do it to kids all the time.
Yeah.
Shall we do it?
But if you do one, you're going to wait a day or two, then you've got to wait four weeks for the next one. So you've got to do them within the same 24-hour period.
And of course, one thing that makes them compatible is that most vaccinations now are the mRNA vaccines, which is gotten out of your body in a couple of days. What you have behind is the memory of the spike protein that works, which makes antibiotics. The flu vaccination is, you know, is an attenuated vaccine, totally different mechanisms used in different parts of the system. So that's what makes them compatible. Thank you.
As far as the wastewater testing, is that like real time? Are you getting the results like right away? Is that through the city of Cody? How does that work?
Well, the wastewater treatment plant operators collect a sample, and that's 50 cc's an hour over 24-hour period. Cody spent the money to purchase an automatic sampler. They purchased a little bit more than was needed because they have other applications they want to use for down the road. And they made that available to Powell, so that at least one day a week, they could be collecting their samples. Once they get sent overnight to the Department of Health, that data is available within days to a week.
So it doesn't take a few days, right?
It's still, it's timely enough to be very useful. When we were using a company in Massachusetts, a spin-off of M I T, that was taking three weeks for that data to come back. And you passed your, whatever was going on at the time. So this is much more timely. The State Department of Health has done fabulous jobs um in getting this program up and running.
So you said that the city of Powell stopped doing the testing or asked or requesting a testing out?
Well, a a year had passed, it was almost time for a new contract. The state was paying, I believe, each municipality two hundred dollars for every sample collected. And that was two samples a week to defray any extra costs of collecting samples. Uh when I spoke with the director of the program at the Wyoming Department of Health, I noticed that the data fell off for Powell. Said that Powell stopped testing. He said, yes, about six weeks ago, they decided not to renew their contract to continue wastewater testing. And John had been totally in favor of it when we got this on the start. He's the one that got it going.
Before, when they were sending it the data, it was similar to Cody then, what you were getting from wastewater?
Um similar in terms of numbers or.
Um spikes. Was it the same problem with Cody as it wasn't back?
Yeah, but what we found is that with one little spike, Powell would leave. And Cody would be a week or two behind it, or vice versa on another little spike. So because we share a population and we share an economy between the two communities, what happens there, happens here. It's just a matter of a week or two. So we're still getting good data. We'd love to have more data. But we're using the data from Cody.
What are hospitals doing right now?
They're impacted effectively.
Um Cody is on crisis of care standards. They went into that uh last week. Uh they notified uh myself, the public health, the Wyoming Department of Health. What that does is that allows them to make maybe some concessions in charting. Um the word that everybody fears is rationing of care. That's what's happened in the northern part of Wyoming right now. Um and uh in Powell, we're feeling the crush. Um I've spoken with members of the incident management team. They're having discussions, making sure documents are in place, but not at the point Cody is right now. To give an example, Commissioner, uh three weeks ago, I used to call six hospitals in forty different states before I could find one that was known on transfer divert to send a critically ill non-COVID patient to. And I ended up sending a patient to Hill Falls, which is a referral pattern you've never used the best. I sent a COVID patient from Powell to Lumbah. It's usually to a higher level of care. We went down a step. And that's just a part of managing this. There is now a um committee that meets weekly, um headed up by Billings Clinic, so that they can coordinate their care and locate available beds for patients with and without COVID uh in southern Montana and the northern Bigfoot Basin. So we get a report every day that says all the hospitals in the Bigfoot Basin, they have this many patients, this many are COVID, uh so many are on ventilators, and we're not ventilating many COVID patients. Once they get bad, they need ventilation, they go to Billings. And this is what we can do. We can provide some little oxygen. We can give fatal therm, which is more oxygen. We can give buyback. We have the opportunity to to ventilate. So it's a matter of balancing the risk versus are they this vice versa.
I think that's one thing that I don't think the public understands very well is the impact on a heart attack patient um trying to decide where they can go and be dealt with.
Well, and you know, my personal example is it goes right now. My wife and I were both really reluctant to go to the ER, even though she's very sick. And you know, we're doing everything we can on outpatient basis. Um and she's over in Pacy right now rather than admitted to the floor um to get some outpatient treatment. But you know, I can understand that. Lots of people don't want to go to the hospital. And unfortunately, um that can lead to bad outcomes for other diseases.
And I think you make a very good point in that this is not just affecting our care of patients with COVID-19. But I personally have kept patients in the ER in Powell many hours longer than I should have after car accidents, heart attacks, pneumonia, decompensated progestin heart failure. Because there is no hospital that will accept them. And we've kept them all night and turned our ER into a little mini ICU so that the patients can get care. Um I've been sending patients to Billings Clinic in San Francisco, Billings for twenty years. Three weeks ago, for the first time, I called up and they said, sorry, we're in transfer divert. They've never uttered those words in twenty years. Last Thursday, they had seventy-four patients on boarding in the emergency room of Billings, whatever. That means you get, you're sick enough to be in the hospital, but there's no bed upstairs for you. So they keep you in the ER for two, three, four days. They feed you there, but you're sitting on an emergency room burning for three or four days. Seventy-four patients. That they're at a hundred and fifty percent capacity in the ICU at Billings right now. And it's really tough for us small hospitals. We end up taking care of sicker patients than we're than we normally would take care of because there's just no place to sit.
Are any of the hospitals running into staffing issues too? With these patients out?
Definitely.
Yes, um for example, at Cody Regional, there was some pushback from the two nurses in the recovery room wanting to watch my wife because any patient that comes out of surgery requires two observers. And they were the only two people because they've been stripped clean and everybody's been sent elsewhere or is sick and at home. So, yeah, staffing is.
Especially more so with Cody right now, I think, than Powell. Um Cody is really being hit hard. I spent the weekend in search and rescue, work rescue training with one of the providers from Cody who was physically exhausted, mentally and physically because of the work that providers have been doing the last year. It is exhausting.
And it's mostly just mostly nurses or technicians or?
It is all across. It it's licensed healthcare providers, nurses, um technicians, um everywhere from radiology technicians to lab technicians, respiratory therapists, who have been working very hard during the pandemic. There's even some fatigue at the administrative level with all the decisions and the hours that have to be the hours that go on.
We uh had stat radiology study ordered at eight o'clock in the morning. And they couldn't get her in until four thirty that afternoon, so.
You know, what's interesting is it goes all the way down to the housekeepers.
Yeah.
The housekeepers are the ones that make that institution run. They clean the rooms, they sanitize it, they turn it over, get it ready, take care of another patient. And they're the ones that are probably as much risk as anybody else after wearing the PPE. And they're the ones that make the facility trouble. Some of the young sun heroes.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, do you have any data on those? Those people that have been put in the hospital, that on on vaccinated people or unvaccinated?
Most of them are unvaccinated, but you know, we have had. I've looked at the numbers that we have downstairs at contact traces. And it's looking between one and five percent vaccinated people are getting sick as well. So a percentage of those are going to the hospital and he's one of them.
Um the people who catch COVID-19 go into a database the state has called RedCap. The people who are vaccinated go into a separate database called Wyoming Humanization Registry. It's very difficult to get to extract the data and get those two to talk to each other. Through RedCap, I've been able to extract data showing that over a three-month period of time recently, um uh five out of three hundred and seventy-three new cases of COVID were second infections. And then two point two percent were people who were fully vaccinated. But that doesn't cross into who is sick enough to be in the hospital. So we've been working with both hospitals to try and get access to the Wyoming Humanization Registry. The state has been hesitant to grant it separately because they feel they run into hidden issues and privacy and private information. So that's the big project this week is you see on Facebook and on Instagram and Twitter, um such and such a hospital, these many people are in the hospital, so many are vaccinated, ICU and ventilated. We haven't been able to generate that data because we're a small, we're all two critical access hospitals. Uh when we say right now, we have sixteen people in hospital, that doesn't account for another four, five, six, seven, or eight that were sick enough to be intubated and sent out of state to a tertiary care hospital. And once we do that, we transfer patients out of state, it's really hard to keep that data. So we're working on that this week, Commissioner, to uh give some local numbers on of the ones that are really sick enough to be in the hospital, how many of them got vaccinated? Because we feel it'll really help with public confidence of vaccines.
Oh, I got it.
And working in the ER, it's really tough when people are sick. Number one, they're often nursing home patients, they're elderly, poor historians, they're so sick, it's hard for them to remember things. That's not data that can be captured very effectively in the ER. Ask, were you vaccinated? When did you get vaccinated? What vaccines did you get? How many doses? That's the last thing these people want to think of when they're having a heart attack or anything.
Bill, I got a quick question for you. Does it look like you're going to have a steady supply of these rapid test kits?
The VYAX now, I'm I've already reached out to the company Q Health, C U E Health, to see about purchasing more tests. I don't know what the state's intentions are. I'm only getting a little ahead of the state. Unfortunately, there's some documents they want me to sign, but I'm not sure that I'm allowed to sign. So I forwarded that to my leadership and I haven't got anything back yet. But we do have antigen testing. Um it's it wouldn't be the preferred testing, but we've got it. In fact, when I'm done here, I'm going downstairs, I ordered up six hundred of those for Cody Regional. They're going to start the testing program I spoke of earlier. And I'm going to show them how they work and what they do. Um one of the downsides to the Q test is um antigen testing usually takes about ten to fifteen minutes. The whole process start to finish for the Q test is twenty-five to thirty minutes. So it really limits throughput on numbers. That's why we're being and because I'm so a small staff, I'm anybody wants tested or screened for whatever reason, they stay in the parking lot, but we go out to them. We're not going to let a whole bunch of people come along again. In fact, I don't know if you all heard about it, but we had a lady, we were in the midst of a whole bunch of older folks, sixty-five and older, getting their uh first or second dose. And this gal came sauntering in through the group and said, without a mask, and said she wanted to be tested. And Deb turned right around, looked at her and said, you just walked through one of our most at-risk populations without a mask and you're asking about testing? You go right back outside and you call us and we'll discuss it. So, you know, people just aren't thinking about it.
An important point to make is people that are sick enough, you see by health provider, it's it's still, you can be seen, you can get there. You have adequate testing. Our deficit right now is testing the asymptomatic and the minimally symptomatic. People who are not sick enough to go to the doctor. And 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 that's tough. We, as Bill mentioned, we provide both antigen tests and Q tests to the schools so that kids that are out of quarantine can get back off of quarantine a couple of days early if they remain asymptomatic with a negative test. And and that's a tough point is people who used to line up at the fairground, excuse me, at the rodeo grounds to get tested. Um and and with the limited resources, both personnel and financial and public health health does. Um you know, they all had full-time jobs, full-time responsibilities before the pandemic occurred. And now Bill and his staff are struggling to do everything they did before and manage the Park County COVID response. Um Cody Regional hopes to be up to speed next week with drive-through antigen testing with the help of uh four National Guard members that the Cheyenne has assigned at Park County. So we hope to have more testing available next week for less than.
The problem is somehow we've got to convince the community, just because you want to get out of work, don't take up a test. And you know, we ran into that problem last year. And it's just, it makes it very difficult to try to get a handle on the people that really need to be tested. And you know.
We had a lot.
Yeah, I know. We had records of people coming day after day after day after day after day and taking a test.
Yeah, some people getting tested three times a week, week after week.
All right, we sure appreciate that, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Go for it.
Thank you.
We've been trying to align it so that it goes.
Oh, stop.
Yeah, exactly. Testing will go way down. Next up, we have Ken in nearby Edwards, Landville, Mass. For time approval of the waste gallons. Waste still replaced for the Park County Landville. Waiter.
Thanks. So well, Greg kind of passed that out there. Uh you can see the summary, the engineer's estimate of the total was eighty-seven thousand five hundred. We come in around one twenty-seven, seven sixty-four. A couple of things, I guess, to to point out that engineering associates looked at it in the review. A couple of things, the um one of the things that we hadn't originally planned on that it was in their engineer's estimate was building a a pad for a creek pad over by our uh and that's going to be a waste drop-off area for where that wall is, some of that in there. And I think that's, yeah, so on the on the bid, that amounts to about eighty-five hundred dollars. And then also the fence and the gate removal, forty-three hundred and six hundred and fifty. Uh there's some muddies there which might be able to, you know, whether we could do that in Tricket House or or whatever, just just to kind of point those out. Um so looking at the comparison, the big items, the difference that we're seeing uh was mainly on the concrete or materials pricing, quite a bit different. Uh Greg, what was this total?
I think typically they'll been concrete at seven hundred dollars a cubic yard, this can't closer to sixteen hundred.
So for pretty pretty price.
You know, so one of the, you know, one of the things is that really because we're trying to get it done this fall, we had a fairly short big window, I think we went out the first part of September, so you know, pretty pretty truncated it. So that may explain uh the focus length number than a fine tune number. I don't know, uh try to try to get this back and regular or just the lack of maybe other competitive business.
You know, I guess a couple of things, Greg, did you reach out to the scale? Uh guys that do our calibration.
Miller, Miller, Miller Fleet, they've been doing that, they've been checking the scales and calibrating the scales and memoirs and et cetera for some time. You know, it's not reliable and I can't, shouldn't have more. But based on all that, based on these reviews, like I sent the cats or try to call them, I sent the cats, I heard what they think of Spain. He's like, yeah, you got it, you wanted to win. I always run the risk of higher price.
Yeah, that was real quick, let's turn before you do the others. Uh you know, we talked to the EA, which they did, they're not here, but we've chatted with the client about this. It's just such a strange climate, there's no guarantee that it'll be any better come spring. But it is quite a bit more that we were anticipating of if we all were to have our budget. Um but we'll get better by spring, we don't.
Sure, I did, you're going to figure out where.
So my question then is, in the request for this proposal, I guess that's what it is. Uh was there a timeline on when we wanted it?
It was set up to where evidence would be done this fall. I don't know if we actually made it before uh before process is uh.
That's yes, this this construction, that's going to impact the cost.
Yeah, that that will.
So.
Yeah.
So I, you're you're saying that we could take a chance and wait till spring? Um without any indication of other interested people, but maybe due to the time, they couldn't fit it in their schedule?
There's another, I I know that um EA stuff, they have at least one other uh request for documents, uh but they'd called before the pre-con, they haven't said they're they're tied up to do with those things. It wasn't a mandatory deal, but um I think, you know, I think every time, you know, typically in followers who are here, people are in a struggle in a rush to try to finish up projects, projects are already committed to a long time, someone has available resources that they dedicate to a new project, they're turning up.
The dust.
What about these budget dollars? I know what you're talking about with the engineer's estimate, but what were you looking at on the budget? Realizing it's an enterprise fund, but can you eat this?
We think we we've talked about that a lot. I think it might have to do with what we do on, say, equipment, other things. There's also what we're hoping to get out of surplus options that we got in there that can help offset that. So we think we'll be okay. And we can, we can. So we think we'll be okay. If we can, we can find the dollars, it's just, it's a bit of a roll of dice on whether it's gonna be any better this spring.
The other follow-up on that is the road grading, 13,000.
Yeah, we thought.
Of us doing that, or is that not feasible with your staff as it exists?
There's potential, we, we're already bringing all the materials into stop pilots, so then we provide the materials, so that's already included. I guess there is a possibility to that. We're trying to get out of, we wanted to, I guess, totally put this on somebody, a contractor and an engineer because of the problems we've had in the past. We'd kind of like to stay out of it and let the. If that makes sense, that's part of what happened last.
That's what I'd say, we did, the county did some of the prep on this.
We'll blame landfill, we're not, but that is what happened.
Landfield, Pryor, and Mr. Tilden.
Just, just a good question. If we don't do this, what are options? I know the one we have now, we put numerous patches on it, it never has worked.
Right. If we're, we're beyond that with this one, we, we can't ship it anymore, everything is late enough to where. There's really not much, there, there's a little bit less expense option, but not by a lot.
So we just, we consider two options, kind of repairing it in place. And we're not adequate knowledge of what's the foundation underneath of it, we thought that was really risky. And that wasn't much different in price versus this option, which is move away, completely put down, do it, put in new foundation, everything's here, talking on what's in place.
It's, a part of it is, the number of chairmen is the, I would say, that there was like 15 thread and they're just for trade, you know. To be able to, now that everything's poured on that deck, it moved that. Then we even asked, well, what if you just bought a whole new deck and it's a piece, but it's still a bottom wall?
So there's a pretty big cost of there that we're gonna have, whether we can, or this spring.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, what would, what would happen if we went back to the old way of guess, basically estimating?
Um, I'd be worried if you. It kind of messes up our whole.
Yeah, so that's intent, when the, when the scale was down during this process, I was like, I could create a next week and here it is. I'll just base everything on our cubic yard.
The beauty of scale, obviously, it's tons of time, you guys probably cubic yards, if you're eight, ten, it is in a half, or there's been yards of this. That, that's why we're, where we're at. It could be in our favor or not.
My view on this is. With the liquid post rain, we advertise to get smart quotes. We may take a gamble, material keeps going up, 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 but I just have a feeling right now, working with contractors that I do, you know, everybody's up again and trying to fix it. There's so much work right now. For them, they only got one response out of this, that we maybe advertise starting in, in January or something and then hope for a better. I think for a whole person, we need to be replaced. And I think the best route is the way you're going, that that's replaced, you were right decided, and we can hopefully continue to, to use ours and kill that. That's what I suggest.
And that was that, our gut, dude, was, was the same. If it breaks this afternoon. Do you send them maybe to Cody or do you go to the co-op and have them wait?
Oh, so it breaks this afternoon, much what we were talking about, Sammy's already had it kind of set up to where, you know, we can. Estimate a cubic yard of, you know, if the metal's 100, or this, this particular item's a hundred dollars a ton. It's already, she's already got another item, just like I have, based on cubic yards, so a hundred dollars a ton, or seventy-two dollars a cubic yard, or whatever that is.
We could build a response with, you know, maybe.
It'll be more difficult in, in Cody, you know, we have a problem with our scale the other day. That one's also a little, a little bit to be, with done. But where the, the keels of the world require a weight, so. And then there's a few loads that keel may bring to us, how that they require weights, so in that case, we just tell them, well, we don't have that ability. We'll have to take this story to Cody, we'll communicate with them in advance, so they're not making.
I mean, I go to one outside, I hate to be by co-op.
You know, and sure, you know, but that would require people to, you know, go in town and come back. A lot of times here in Cody, you know, there's a scale right along the highway, you know, we, we evidently, they've done that in the past, where they'll, they're gonna wait on the way out. Say, here's what I weigh, and tell them, you know, I weigh 13,570, and typically this is my empty weight.
We can make through. I agree. Let's see if we can, you know, kick it out and get more, more bits this spring or next spring. Great. Good. You don't get to join with Brian. You can. All right. Next up and final. Park County Brian, engineer Brian Edwards. Vacation of Park County Road 6JM, Road 54, Road 54B, just a quick synopsis. This is something we've been dealing with for years, trying to get rid of a bridge. That's probably the worst bridge in the state of Wyoming, it's damn sure the worst bridge in Park County. And make things right with the landowners, we've gone through a lot of process, a lot of the process of. Claims for damages, dismissable claims for damages, and I think we're at a point where we can move forward with this vacation. So if you wanna.
I've had a pretty good synopsis. So what we're, I guess, up against is back in 2015. The commissioners initiated the process to, to vacate those roads, which would be 6JM, 54B. Portions of 54 that are on TE Ranch, that also go over Hawks Hill Ranch, kind of the Castle Rock Road area. And that got to a place, got stalled because of damages and whatnot. And after there was no move, but for a while, back to 2017, I don't have the exact dates, but the. Landowners over TE Ranch on one petition. For 54B and portions of Road 54 and 6JM. Submitted a petition to initiate the process to pick that back up and vacate that. Which is kind of where we're at today, and then in the second petition, Hawks Hill Ranch also submitted a petition to vacate. The portion, we went and bought 6JM, Road 54 across Hawks Hill lands, lands. And, and so those petitions have gone through the process, public notices, claims for damages. There were multiple objections that were submitted via email, some letters related to state land access. Which was, which has been discussed, and, and you guys can probably discuss that in more detail, explain that. And, but basically, to make a short story long. All of the, the, the claims for damages that was the ditch company. And also related to Hawks Hill Ranch, or related to the access, and what was gonna cause them damage, has since been withdrawn. So as of now, there are no claims for damages within the notice process, any of those claims have been withdrawn. And so based on going through the statutory process, we don't have to assign a, an appraiser because all those damages are no longer in play. So I think we're at the point where the commissioners could make the decision on that. A couple of points of clarification. There is a part of Road 54 that leaves Hawks Hill, it goes north through the Castle Rock Ranch. That was about part of the original petition, so that would remain in place, portion of Road 54. They were, were not a party as private petitioners. And, and also there are, there's a separate process that is pending, related to the public road easements. There, where the loop road was being built from County Road 6NS, extending to the state land and going down 6JM. That alignment for that did follow Road 54, or, you know, was followed that same alignment. It's a big part of that, so there's a separate process, so that may get picked up in the petitions, or at least what's clear. So we, as the commissioners, we as a team, initiated that proceedings to. To vacate those public road easements, that is in the process of being noticed, those notices will be out this week. But that's separate, related, but I guess that, that process is still pending. So this has to do with Road 54 across TE Ranch, across Hawks Hill properties. And 6JM and 54B. And I think, like I said, this has been discussed for many years, I think I summarized it, but I think we're at the point where. You could make action to vacate that or not today.
One more thing I want to touch base on, you brought it up earlier, is we did receive quite a bit of concern about the state land portion of that 6JM. Accesses, but it, you know, we've come to an agreement that, you know. TE Ranch representatives are here, that they're going, they're going to pursue, pursue a land swap. And. For that public, that chunk of state land. To create a piece of state land that the, where the Carter Mountain access road is, public is parking, currently parking on, on TE Ranch land. And there, that's a pretty major access point for Carter Mountain, so we're appreciative of that. I think that's gonna benefit the public quite a bit more than, than this current piece of, of state land is accessed from 6JM. And that, you know, like, what, when, remind me when the, when that was easement was granted from, from a private road to, to the county, was that in the 80s? Late 80s, early 80s?
Ninety-six.
Pardon?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, so prior to 96, there was no access to that, that state land parcel, so. I think it's a, it's a win-win, there's obviously no guarantees, but, but it's, from my understanding, the TE Ranch pursuing that with, with the state land more. So I think that's been addressed, we, damages have been withdrawn, both from Hawks Hill and anywhere else, we aren't seeing any damages, so.
One more thing, just to throw it out. As she's been a little bit of a whole workforce that she found, kind of confirmed back in. The date of this is, was December 2018. So the county permitted. Up to $200,000 in the later reads. Commissioner Livingston made a motion to commit to repairing 6JM as described in the engineer's report, up to 150,000. And continued maintenance on the road up to the bridge. Commissioner Fullperson seconded that motion. Commissioner Tilden commented that he would like to be able to help repair it, increase to 200,000. Commissioner Fullperson amended his motion to 200,000, and motion carries. So that was in December 18. Since that, back in fall, 2019, we did, our road bridge department. Did expand up to, let's see, 56,500 by our calculations to work on the road from 6JM. I bring that up just.
So, and I was gonna bring that up, so basically what we're, we're just asking is that. That the county not be held to that additional 144,000. When we vacate, we don't want to come back and say, well, you agreed to go up to 200,000, is that, is that, are you in agreement with that? Was not holding this liable for the other 144?
Yes.
Kurt, Kurt would. Yeah. Okay, I, I thought you would be able to, that was one point that was brought up to us earlier, that we had, we had committed, so. Okay. Commissioner Tilden, you've got something to say on this.
No, I don't have anything to say. Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we go ahead and vacate Road 6JM, 54, and that, that portion of Road, oh, excuse me. Road 6JM, 54P, and that portion of Road 54.
That crosses TE Ranch.
That crosses TE Ranch and the portion of Hawks Hill.
There will be a legal description on that.
Correct.
You're correct. Moved and seconded. Further discussion. I do recall, I do recall, Tom, Kurt, and Marianne, that I get this done while I was chairman. I mean, and maybe it happened, I had to do it twice, be chairman twice, but I think we're gonna get, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for getting this done.
Yes.
Long time.
Yeah, we appreciate you dogging it all this time.
Thank you. Kurt, you ought to take that kind of roadside, have a heap of pursuit there. He's the one that needs that sign. Well, what we did, we were talking about. You're, you're, you're done. Why you drank later? We were talking about. Trying to do something with Patriot. Subdivision and the subdivision improvements agreement, but in discussion with Attorney Skoric. He doesn't, he's not comfortable making movement on that. Let's not have it in language in front of him, written, what we're after. You've seen emails coming in from. Troy Hill. Yeah, I just. I unfortunately don't see any way we, we'd be going against our regulations. I would. Recommend that we, I'm gonna make sure it's on the agenda for October 5th, maybe we'll make it the first agenda item we can.
It's R B M.
Okay, and. Do what we can to help move forward.
In the event. He. Begins construction. It'd be a violation.
Well, no, I think that's at risk, I think. No, he, they, there, there is, there, at first statute, if you begin, if you begin construction on a subdivision. Without approval, it is, but I.
I'm, I'm just throwing this out.
That would mean that the county would have to investigate and stand site.
And the pursuit of that violation is next door, Skoric or?
Skoric. I would, I would think that if, if he first, he would have to have a notice of violation coming from the. Office, the filing director's office. And then if you had the notice of violation, then we could pursue legally with Attorney Skoric. And, and then. Go from there.
I just feel bad because we're sitting here September 20th. One, two.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Mean a big difference.
It's time of year. It's time of year, yeah.
So. I just wanted, would like to help.
And I agree with you.
Come as quick as we can.
There, they didn't have everything in order, you know, as. 100%. And. I think, I just think at this point in time, we're. At this point in time, we're, our hands are tied.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would agree with you, the only thing I would say. Is if the applicant did decide to proceed. And the process would be that. Land Department Joy would have to write him a notification, violation of rules and regulations. And he would come back to us, and we were the ones, we would be the ones that set any potential fine.
Then he's gonna feel the.
And I would, and I would never tell anybody, break our rules and regulations.
I would either, and he can, he can appeal the notice of violation to us.
He can appeal, yeah, but in our case, because he, he did violate. We would have to find him guilty of that violation, but we're the ones that set the fine. That, that's all I'm saying.
Fair enough, well. With that, before we adjourn, did you have something else on that? Well, before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Susan, this is our last meeting. I'd like to thank you for the help that you provided this board for the years you've been here. And wish you good luck in your new position. I was definitely, we're still pissed at. All right. Moved and seconded, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.